We'd like to welcome our guest to the Westfall Parish School Board Meeting. Come anytime that your schedule will allow. Let's make this call roll, please.
This mic's not working.
Here.
Mr. May, here.
This mic's not working.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Mr. McCallum?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
And Mr. Manley?
Here.
I stand, please, for the pledge of allegiance begun by Board Member Tom McCallum. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the case begun by Board Member Greg Manley.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, just how awesome and loving and merciful God you are, Heavenly Father. We just praise and glorify you and thank you so much for the blessings you give us each and every day. And thankful for the opportunity we have to live in this free country that we're in and the freedoms that you give us each and every day, Heavenly Father. We're also thankful for the opportunity you've given us to serve on this school board. We just ask for your guidance and wisdom during this meeting and that the things that we decide and do as a board bring glory and praise to your name, Heavenly Father. Most of all, we thank you for our salvation and the Christ Jesus paid on the cross for our sins. All of this, we pray in His precious holy name. Amen.
Boy, we need approval of the minutes. July 13th, 2021. Motion in a second.
I saw a move, we approve.
Second.
In a second. Favor, yes?
Yes.
opposed, no. Motion carries. Need approval of the agenda. Motion in a second to approve the agenda.
I saw a move, we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
opposed, no. Motion carries. First, any report, Dr. Coker?
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Uh, I want to announce three interim positions that we have named over the past week. These positions came about as the retirement of Ms. Marcia Baker, who is our Director of Safety and Security. Filling in that interim position for the first semester will be Ms. Jennifer Nichols. Jennifer, you can stand up or wave to them or whatever. Certainly congratulate Jennifer. Got some big shoes to fill, but I know you'll do a great job with it. Jennifer was our principal at Westridge Middle School, and so we are naming the interim principal of Westridge Middle School, Mr. Brent May. Brent, stand up. Congratulations. And Brent was an assistant principal at Westridge, so we need to fill an interim assistant principal. And that is Ms. Corey Anumachara. And Corey, if you will stand up. Congratulations to each of you. That's all I have, Mr. Hicks.
We need to revise number nine.
I'm sorry?
Do we need to do anything on number nine on the revision?
It was just a change on the agenda, Elmer.
No, it's okay.
No, it was a change that was made Friday and posted.
It was still there.
It's clarification.
Hey, Joe.
Okay. Moving down to business. Item number one, to consider and take action with respect of adopting a resolution ordering and calling a special election to be held in East Washington Parish School District, the parish of Washington, state of Louisiana, to authorize the incurring of debt and insurance of bonds, therefore, therein rather, making application to the state bond commission and providing for the other matters in connection therewith. Mr. Grant Sluter.
Thank you. Grant Sluter, Holy Udel Bond Counsel. You, at a preceding meeting, gave an announcement that you were proposing to consider this resolution at today's meeting. It is calling for an election on the east side for November 13th. It's to authorize twenty mil- uh, not exceeding 20 million of general obligation bonds. And it references the projects set forth in the capital improvements plan approved by the school board on January 14th, 2020. This will provide additional funds for those projects. And there is no projected increase in the current millage rate that is being levied to service all of the outstanding bonds of the east district. And that's basically the resolution. And upon adoption, this will be on the November 13th ballot.
We have a motion in a second.
I move we approve the resolution ordering a special call election for November 13th on East Washington Parish.
Okay.
Right.
Let's make this roll call vote, please.
You have any comment? Comment?
Any comments?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, any comments from the board?
From the public?
Public. And any comments from the committee? From the audience? Any comments at all? Okay, let's make this roll call vote, please.
Mr. McCallum?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner? Mr. McCallum?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sluter. Moving down to item number two, consideration and approval of retaining the professional service of North Delta Regional Planning and Development Corporation to assist the school board in preparation and submission of its 2021 redistricting plan, Mr. Doug Mitchell of North Delta and Mr. Eleanor.
You want to poke?
Sure. Yeah. There you go.
I got one. Gave me one already.
What I passed out to you was a copy of the current plan that's in place. There's some numbers. There's two spreadsheets at the front. Thank y'all for the opportunity to come before you and present you with our proposal to do redistricting. As you know, most of you have been involved with this every 10 years. We have to redistrict based on the 2020 census. Last time we did that, this was in 2011, 2012 from the 2010 census. What you have before you is what the numbers were in 2010. And part of the reason why you redistrict is because population shift, population growth, population goes away. And in this process, we have to look at each district, overlay it with the new census and find out what the new numbers are. When we met back in March with Mr. Noah, Dr. Coker, Mr. Hicks, the census hadn't come out and it was supposed to be out in April. That's usually when it follows the census, April of the following year. Well, COVID affected the Census Bureau just like everyone else. They came out and said the data wouldn't be available to the end of September. Well, last week, they announced that August the 12th, the data would be available. We should start receiving this information August 16th. So we should be able to start the redistricting process for all the entities. At the time that I met with Mr. Coker, Mr. Hicks, Mr. Noah, presented them with a proposal for doing this work. And in there, I spelled out the different tasks. One, project monitoring and assistance, kickoff meeting, consultation with individual members, development of three alternative plans. That doesn't mean that we can't do more or we can't tweak a plan. And in that process, what I was talking about when I first started talking, taking the 2010 district and overlaying the 2020 data to find out if we even have to redistrict. So that's the first major step. And once we determine that, then if we don't have to do anything, we will prepare the paperwork to send to the Secretary of State, the Justice Department, explaining that this process is not needed. If we see that the districts are out of alignment, then we will start approaching it. And then when you start going through the rest of it, the proposal, presentation of draft plans and then presentation of recommended plan, then we have to put together the legal descriptions for the new districts if we have to make it that far. And then we will make a presentation of the legal description to the school board. And the packages will be developed and next task, and then project submission, and then the monitoring, monitoring of the submission to the Secretary of State, the U.S. Justice Department, and then finals. You have any questions on that? I know I went over it pretty quick and I know you're gonna have questions. This is an attempt to just tell you and explain to you what I was involved and it's not just a brief look at it and see what all we have to do. We're gonna have to satisfy the 1965 Voting Rights Act, one man, one vote. And that kind of goes hand in hand with the numbers that I gave to each of you, where we have to see what the population is in each district. We'll have to look at the racial breakdown and see what the population changes are. Then we'll find out what the total deviation is. And what the total deviation is, is the highest district or the largest district, 5% from the optimal. And how you get that is you just divide it by the total numbers of members that you have in each plan. And in this case, in 2010, 14,986 was the optimum number. The high number was 15,735. The low number was 14,237. You take the highest high and the lowest low and add that together and you want to be below 10% deviation. So that's one of the main things that we're gonna look at. And then we'll have to satisfy the 1965 Voting Rights Act and the Justice Department. Then we'll have to submit it to the Secretary of State. We're gonna build this plan based on the current precincts in Washington Parish and using whole precincts. That's our ultimate goal. If we can't do that and satisfy all the requirements, then we will have to split them. And once we do that, we have to go before the police jury and notify them and let them know. That's the reason why in project monitoring, putting together a committee for this group, and I've corrected the language in this to more fit Washington Parish school board. I'm gonna leave a copy with Mr. Noah so y'all can look at it and see what I'm talking about. Committee, we might want to include the clerk, of course, the register voters, because that's who I'm gonna be working with and just be able to inform y'all what all is taking place. I'll entertain any questions, try to answer them. If I don't have the answer, I'll find out.
Doug, when did you say you anticipate receiving the final numbers on the census information for 2020?
Census Bureau announced Thursday of last week, data will be available the 12th of August. So we're gonna be able to start sooner, which brings a good point up in the timeframe for all this fun stuff. If you go back to the original proposal that I gave for Dr. Coker, the timeline, we've lost six months because we didn't start in April. We have to about December to get this done. I don't see a problem with meeting that. I think the deadline's like March 22nd, 2022, that we have to have all this submitted and approved. And once you send it to the Secretary of State, they usually take 60 days to review this. The Justice Department takes 90 days. So if we have any issues with it and have to answer questions, we're gonna have to answer it and it can push past that deadline. So it's kind of important that we really get on the ball with this and start moving forward with it.
So you will contact us and start scheduling meetings to talk about the data info?
Yes.
Census information?
First step I'll do, once the data is released to me, I'll start processing it through our software package, find out what the numbers are. I'll contact Mr. Noah and Dr. Coker, let them know that we may need to pull this committee together if that's how you so choose to approach this. And then we'll start the process of going through all this.
Any more questions for Doug?
Doug, I have one.
Yes, sir.
I know that when we met, and this is my first redistricting as superintendent, and I know that in the past, the past several years, there's never been a committee per se. It's pretty much been the individual board members would go and we would meet with them about their area, their zones. Is that a new thing or?
No, sir. We don't have to do it that way. It's how you choose to do it. This was just an option to do this. Reason why we're doing this is in some parishes, the school boards and the police jurors have the same number.
Right.
And I just wanted to give y'all this opportunity if you wanted to do this. It's how you want to do it. We can restructure that part of it how you want to do it.
Okay.
Now, if you noticed in the kickoff meeting, I talked about meeting with each individual member and whoever wants to look at this.
Right.
Because this needs to be transparent.
Agreed. And I think in the past, because several of you have said on the, I might want to share your experience on going through this process and how it best worked. Alvin, I know you've been through several of them with our board. Just maybe some recommendations that y'all might have.
Well, I know North Delta has done the school board redistricting, going back at least four rotations that I'm aware of, back when Mr. Creed was the executive director. And Doug has taken over, what Doug, in the last two years?
Yes, sir.
And Doug has been with North Delta, Mr. Creed, and worked very closely with them for a number of years. And Doug has been their internal demographer. And so Doug's very familiar with this entire process and they have an entire staff at North Delta. I think the board very much has felt and been confident with the work product. To my knowledge, the plans that they've come up with, like I said, going at least the last three or four rotations. I know there've been a few blips along the road, but I think they've all been approved by the state and the Justice Department. And so I think North Delta does an excellent job and y'all should have a high level of confidence. Now, it's up to the board to make a decision how you want to handle it. My recommendation today, Doug's presented a proposal. Obviously, North Delta, as other groups that do this kind of work, are compensated for these services. And my recommendation today would be, now that you've heard Doug's presentation, would be to take the proposal under advisement, give the board members time to look at it and study it. I know there was a revision that Doug sent to us over the weekend. It probably just made your folder today. What I would suggest is take it under advisement and consider the possibility to keep this thing moving. As Doug said, maybe have a special call meeting toward the end of the month. Doug said he could wait until September, but he would prefer not to, basically, because they do a lot of public bodies. And maybe consider having a special call meeting to approve the agreement that Doug has presented for the board's consideration. And that would be my recommendation, too.
And I would certainly agree that you know more about Washington Parish and where we are and the population and all. I don't think the taking it under advisement at this point is necessarily about even the amount that you're charging. I think it's extremely reasonable, you know, on what our fee would be. But to give our board a chance to kind of go through number one and two and see exactly what direction do we want to go on that part. That would be my only, you know, my only thought. Everything else certainly appears to be in line with what exactly what we want to do. And Mr. Hicks, it may be that we could call a special board meeting just to address this. Because when we do a contract, I feel like the contract is there and it's, and we're locked into it. I just think we need to, you know, to need to know that part of it.
And I've worked with Doug about, I don't know how many district reapportionments, probably three at least.
I believe so. I was with David in 1984, so we did it in 90, 2000, and 2010.
And he's always done great.
David's gonna be missed this goes around.
Yes, he has, so.
But Doug?
Yes, sir.
I, you know, I think I have the same type of concern about the four member. And it's in there.
I've changed, I've since changed that since we've talked about that and.
Okay.
And I'm sorry.
My question was, if it was there, you had an idea that it must be there for a specific reason. What do you like about that particular?
When dealing with a school board and a police jury, which we're not having to do here because there's seven members here. And in that example that I originally passed out in that proposal, the example was using nine members in a fictitious number. And I have since, you know, I think in the contract that I sent to you, I even spelled out the example a couple of weeks ago. And then I've already changed that. In this case, if we were to do a committee of three people, may, when putting this together, we weren't thinking of four school board members because we don't want to violate.
I understand, right.
Violate that. But we were thinking of each body, the school board and the police jury and some parishes that we have that have the same number of members and they can work together. And in this case, right here, we need to work together with the police jury because they're the governing body of the precincts of Washington Parish.
Okay.
So I have since changed that number.
I understand.
Yeah, right. But it was more of a general deal for a nine-member body.
Back on the number one, though.
Yes, sir.
You said the committee board should be made up of four members.
Right. And I've changed that to three members.
Okay.
In this case, if you choose to go a committee.
Got you. I understand. If we choose to go with a committee.
Sir?
If we choose to go with a committee.
Yes.
And I guess my question again was, what's the advantage to going with a committee as opposed to the disadvantage? In your opinion?
There's real no advantage because I'm gonna say that each member and any concerned citizen at a public hearing is going to come up and voice their concern one way or another in addressing an issue that may arise with the redistricting process.
I know, but the wording was not could. It was should.
Yes, sir.
The word is should.
Yes, sir.
And so if the word should is there in the sentence, obviously, there has to be an advantage from some.
Sorry, I'll have to find out what that answer is because I'm telling you what, how I see it. Now, I appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm not trying to put you on the spot because I know you've been dealing with this.
Sure.
This is only my second. This would be my third.
Right. Well, I assure you that we're here to help you do the best we can.
Right, right.
And I will find that answer out for you. But we can take it completely out. I think that's what we're.
Well, I think Dr. Coker has shared with us, also with attorney, has shared with us, maybe taken on advisement, and then we'll discuss it and then. Now, one other question. In this packet that you submitted, there was a timeline. In the timeline, it referenced 12 months. Now, because of COVID and we're getting the material back from the census late, so that reduces it now down to what, eight months?
Yeah. We've got actually four months before we really need to approve it. That's the reason why I'm telling you December.
To approve what, when you say?
To approve it. Approve an adopted plan.
Okay, so we've got to get a plan approved and adopted within four months?
Yes, sir. That's what I was talking about.
So we gotta do everything that's on the timeline in four months?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
Once we adopt it in late November, early December, it's still gotta go before the Secretary of State and Justice Department. And they're gonna take their due time in reviewing it to make sure it's not a problem. That goes back to what I was initially talking about. We normally get that data in April of the year following the census. So we're already six months behind.
Good. Maybe this is my last question.
Sir?
Maybe this is my last question concerning.
Okay.
If it's not all done within that four months, what would be the result? Because I know we have a general election next year in November. Am I correct?
That's correct. That's the importance of the deadline.
So if it's not, if we don't approve a plan by the deadline.
I'm gonna lean on Mr. Noah on that one right there. What's the law say on that?
Well, it's not a good thing. There's a date that's established by statute. I think it's March of 2022 that all this process should be completed. Now, this board may remember about 10 or more years ago, because of some litigation, board elections were delayed and the process was slowed down. And some of you that are seated on the board now actually served, I think, a three-year term. But so the onus is on us in good faith to comply. Now, as Doug pointed out, as long as we get it to them by the end of December, we're clearly in good faith. And at that point, it's the state and the Justice Department to have time to do it by March. If they don't get that done by March, there's really no sanction, in my opinion, that would be applicable to us. That's just the statutory date that's established, as Mr. McCoy, you said, for elections and that sort of thing. But that would be the import of it. So I think it's incumbent on the board to make a good faith effort to get this done. I agree with Doug. I think probably by the end of December to adopt a plan. Doug's indicated that he thinks from now, the end of December, is more than ample time to get all this done. It's just compressed and condensed. And then you have the Secretary of State and the Justice Department involvement from January to March. So he's indicated to me, he doesn't think it's gonna be a problem. Now, it could be and we've, this board has experienced a problem in the past and it resulted in abbreviated terms for some of the board members. But hopefully, that's not gonna be the case.
But that's under the assumption that there are no hiccup, that there are no opposition, that there are no lengthy questions regarding the plan. So that's the assumption.
But we don't, it's totally out of our control, Reverend McCoy. I mean, it's, the census delay has created the problem. And I think what Doug is trying to point out, everybody has the same problem that we have because of the delay in receipt of the census information. So what has happened in the past with him getting the census information in April, that's off the table now because the census data, because of the COVID situation and other situations, that it's been delayed. And so the process is just gonna have to be compressed, which is totally out of our control. He's just trying to tell us, you know, let's get it done between now and December. And from what our conversations have been, hopefully, that will be no problem. If it is, just have to deal with it. But the statutory deadline to get this done is March of 2022, which should be more than ample time. We'll just have to deal with that contingency if we don't meet the March deadline.
I hear what you're saying. I believe, now I hear. I mean, I understand it as well as you explained it, but I hear it. My point is that my question still remains. And you've answered the question that if there is, the deadline is not met, then what could possibly transpire?
It could result in delay in the election. Potentially, potentially.
That's the answer then.
Potentially.
Yeah, that's the answer.
Of course, that's gonna involve, you know, other issues. But I mean, that's the potential ramification of it. As it has in the past, it could result in the elections, not just for us, but for everybody else that there's a problem. That's right, not just us.
Right. And that was the answer that I wanted.
Yes, sir.
To hear.
You know, I think Harold's talking about worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
It's been my experience, having gone through the 2000 reapportionment with the census in 2000, working with Mr. Creed and North Delta. Y'all have done a great job in gathering that information and giving the board at that time options to look at that y'all feel comfortable with. And, you know, in my mind, I don't see a problem with this board coming up with an approved plan based on information that y'all received. Because, you know, I enjoyed working with you guys in the past. I know y'all are gonna continue to do a good job and come up with different options for the board members to look at. And I feel comfortable these board members are gonna come up with, you know, a consensus on approving a plan. Even though we are under a short timeline, I think we can all come together and make the decision that's what's best for the entire Washington Parish voters. You know, that's my opinion. We have in the past, I think we can do it. Any more questions for Doug? Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Moving down to item number three, approval of the 2021, 22 Washington Parish Schools COVID Operational Guidance. Dr. Coker and Ms. Marcia Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. We are, um, going to be presenting the 2021, 2022 Washita Parish COVID Operational Guidance. And we are zooming Marcia in. Marcia's currently in Atlanta. Can you hear us, Marcia?
Yes.
Okay. Marcia's the one that has been our Director of Safety and Security. And so, um, she's the one that knows more about our plan than probably anybody around. So, uh, if you would, I'm going to let you go ahead and present the plan today. And then we will, uh, take questions or comments from both audience and the board after that. Marcia, can you stop just a minute? Let me, let me stop you. Clint is working on making sure the sound is going to be coming through for us. But, uh, you can hear us, right? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, we're going, I'm going to go ahead and present what we have. And we have other directors in here that certainly can, can chime in, just so that, make sure that everyone can understand uh, what we're talking about. You can certainly be there to field questions as they may come up also, okay? So, Board, if you'll look at the operational guidance that, okay, the operational guidance that we have, a difference between beginning this school year and ending, or beginning last school year, was the fact that we had phases that the state had set up for us. Phase one was the most restrictive phase. You had limited occupancy. You had, um, it was, it was much more confined to everything that we did. And then the governor actually moved us to phase two, which was 50% occupancy and a lot of things that was going on. But throughout the entire thing, the masks were mandated out there. They were things that we had to deal with and have to, had to live with. And then we actually moved near the end of the school year to phase three, which gave us 75% occupancy, especially on transportation, on a school bus and, and things like that. And so we've not heard anything about phases as we are attempting and trying to begin this next school year. So we're actually looking at a Washita Parish Modified Phase Three, yet still keeping in place the directives that, uh, have been put on us to be able to put out there. I will tell you that, uh, you know, I'm, I'm a rule follower. I'm a lawful person, even though I don't like all the rules and all the laws that are out there. I'll be one of the first to tell you that. But, but we still have to have that guidance in order to be able to have, uh, some semblance of organization and, and making sure that everyone is safe in the process. And so, and I'll tell you this, last week, we had to change our entire, uh, plan, COVID operational plan, because everything that we had was, uh, recommended. Masks, face coverings were recommended by what we were hearing at the time until we had the mandate that was put on us. A mandate for a school system is like a law that's being passed down, especially when the governor has put the mandate on us. That is what we're getting from our attorneys, who we, we certainly follow their lead on, on dealing what we're doing uh, for liability measures, as well as just the general welfare. You know, I've always thought that if we're going to make a mistake, try to make it in the, uh, the best interest of our kids. And so if masks are a mistake, I'm sorry. I, I can't, I wish I could control that, but I have no control over that. But if it keeps one kid from getting sick, then I certainly, uh, think that, that would be it. I think that parents ought to have a choice. I, I, I certainly do. I think that's why we have the democracy in our country. And so even in the process of the parents' choices, we still have those rules that we have to follow. Uh, what I keep harping on with our employees right now is that this is a temporary thing through September 1st. Hopefully things will get better. Lord, I pray every day that things get better, not only for our students, but for our employees. And, uh, we have a board member that's affected with COVID right now. And so we certainly want, uh, to do what we can do within the school system to try to make things as safe for every kid that we have and all of our employees that come in each and every day. And so as this was put together, all of that was taken into consideration. And, uh, due to the recent mandate from the governor, uh, we will be in masks in schools through September 1st. And, you know, we'll see where it goes and where it leads from that point. Uh, you can see some of the exceptions to the previous phase three that we actually ended the school year with this past year. Uh, and, and I'll be honest, my heart goes out to a kindergarten, first and second grader because we didn't ask them to do this last year. But now we're being told they have to do it this year. And I have a sister-in-law that's a kindergarten teacher. And our teachers are very, they are very good. And, you know, my thought is, and it may be in the law and it may not, but if I see a little, if I see a five-year-old that's having a meltdown, I'm going to have a place for that kid to be able to breathe. And I, I may have a designated area in the back of the classroom or back of that classroom where it may be some reprieve from some of this. I understand that. And I think we got to use some common sense in the approach on how we're taking this. So that is, uh, one of the things that has changed for our little ones. The mask mandate pertains to indoor activities only. It does not have anything to do with our outside activities. And so we are certainly going to utilize the outside as much as we possibly can, uh, for our kids and for our teachers' sake. 100% capacity on buses. We, it was, it finished the year with 75% last year. Uh, they have mandated 100%, but all kids and adults riding, any public transportation or buses will be wearing masks this year. Uh, again, I said masks are required outdoors. And the K-12 exclusion rule for quarantine, there's been some quarantine rules. And I know last year, we had quite a few of our, our students who were quarantined because they came in close contact with, uh, adults or children who were actually tested positive, who had tested for it. And so this year, the LDH, and remember, this comes from, actually comes from president through CDC, through LDH, through governor, through the, the department, the Bessie members and our Department of Education. So we're on the end of the, the pecking line here. We're the ones that all of these experts are telling us how it's funneling through and how it's coming to us. And now you take it and you go and you make sure that it's, it's within the guidelines of what has been set for. And so that's a challenge sometimes. That's a big challenge. Uh, I know that, uh, across this state and across this country, there are anti-maskers. There are people that just don't think that that's, you know, that's either in the best interest of their kids or in the best interest of what's going on. But unfortunately, uh, we are tied and this board is tied to doing what we are being told to do at times. So if you'll look on the second page, there's some quarantine and isolation guidelines. And I will tell you, Marcia is the, she is our resident expert on the quarantine. I know that she has worked with Mr. Geis quite a bit. Uh, he is our personnel director. So Todd, do you feel comfortable going through some of the quarantining changes that have come about? Or Marcia, can we hear you now?
Will be the only change to quarantine guidance? There's basically two. Is my voice better coming through now?
It is better.
Okay. The K-12 exclusion rule allows for if students aren't masked, they're sitting with people wearing masks, they're wearing masks. If one of those children is positive, but the other children are wearing masks, they will not have to quarantine.
We have a lot of kids who were quarantined sometimes. Two or three.
So this was a rule that was put into the K-12 setting by LDH and CDC. That rule does not apply to adults, only the students. And then the other rule change was for athletes to quarantine quarantine days, regardless of the shortened time that they could use. Now they can quarantine with the 10-day shortened quarantine. So that's a new exception that has changed since.
Okay. Mr. Geis, you want to add anything to that?
And I think that's what you were saying. And that's on the second and third page, uh, with the, uh, exclusion rule and then the quarantine rule, 10 days, we're quarantine. Everything else pretty much remains the same. Just everything, I know you're talking Marcia too.
Yeah, if you'll look, and there is really no phase four, but we are doing this for the benefit of Washita Parish students and employees, so that we kind of know. And I'm on the, uh, page that says phase four, OPSB hopes to transition to this phase in the near future. Uh, the first part of that is masking encouraged, but not mandatory, except during transportation on the bus. We have no control over that. Uh, that's where the masking could be optional for students or staff. But I don't see the CDC or LDH changing how they would do their quarantining if a child, once we get to that phase, is in close contact with a kid that tests positive. Okay? It's very possible that they would certainly have to go through the quarantine, uh, from, from that. Wearing a mask will contribute to the ability to use the K-12 indoor classroom exclusion rule, which is what, uh, Ms. Baker just talked about. Uh, again, we are not requiring masks for, for students outside. Another change is, last year, it was one cohort of kids. One static group of kids had to remain together all year, all year long. And this is more for our elementary students. This year, they are moving that from one static group to four static groups. And so, you know, unfortunately, we couldn't have a lot of our parents come in for awards and end of the year and mid-year and grandparents' day and, and things like that, which we, we actu- actually, uh, really don't like doing. We like our people and our, our, uh, members of our community in our schools. And so that was a, a change for us. Uh, one of the things that's also, that's out there is unvaccinated adults are to mask when working closely with students, as well as within a large group. So that's kind of what the, the plans are right now. Uh, Board, if y'all have any questions, we'll entertain what you might have to start with.
Any question from the board?
Mr. Hicks, I know that, uh, I've been in contact and I've talked with Tiffany Hatton is one that was, that had called me and I had talked with her. And, uh, I think she had some representing parent choice LA. Is that correct? Is there anybody in here that, are you Tiffany?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna, I'm going to turn it back over to our president now and then he can ask for any comments from the audience. And then we can certainly come back with the board after that. And can I ask you to do this, as you, if you'll come to the mic right here? Let us know your name and if you're representing anyone, who you're representing. And per policy, we have three minutes.
Okay, I'll try to keep it to three.
Okay.
Um, again, my name is Jill Hines. I'm co-director of Health Freedom Louisiana. Is this better?
No, like it's on.
Sure. Uh, again, my name is Jill Hines. I'm co-director of Health Freedom Louisiana. And thank you so much for allowing public comment, parent comment for this. It's such an important issue. Um, and I'm so glad to know too, that you're a rule follower. As you know, proclamation number 137 JBE 2021 provides several exceptions to the face covering requirement, including any individual with a medical condition that present, uh, prevents the wearing of a face covering. Section E of that proclamation states that operators of businesses and organizations are entitled to rely on the representation of their customers and their patrons. In other words, you may take the parents at their word that their child has a medical exception to the governor's proclamation. An August 6th, um, opinion from Attorney General Jeff Landry concluded that Bessie, outside of specific legislative direction, has the authority to again implement COVID mitigation, uh, guidelines, including exceptions. The AG noted that recommendation to consider constitutional rights of students that their parents may raise. A short explanation of why it's important that you do that from a liability perspective. Just like the COVID-19 vaccines, masks are an experimental medical intervention under emergency use authorization. The federal law governing EUA's 21 U.S. Code 360BBV has specific criteria that must be met in regards to informed consent. Last, last school year, that federal law was broken and parents and students' rights were violated when they were not made aware that masks are a medical intervention under EUA, of the significant risks associated with wearing masks, of the right to refuse, and of the appropriate monitoring and reporting of adverse events associated with masking. Our organization received reports of those adverse events. The government did not. Federal law requires that individuals have a right to refuse because it's an experimental medical intervention. There is no insert, if you will, to describe the known risk of long-term mask use in children because the studies have not been done. There have been serious concerns raised by the scientific community regarding the recommendation, including but not limited to the inhalation of nanoparticles from cloth masks with no industry standard. What will the lungs of these children look like in years to come? There is no data on the physical and mental well-being of children wearing masks seven to eight hours a day or on the impact of brain function or learning. A doctor's note should not be required. By what standard will a doctor determine if a child will have an exemption when there is no evidence of safety of this experimental medical intervention? So why is this a liability issue for you? You are requiring something that the governor is not. The governor does not require a doctor's note. The AG's opinion suggests that any Bessie recommendation forthcoming includes consideration for exceptions and constitutional rights. Bessie's current guidelines leave the decision to the districts. With the expiration of Act Nine, liability is back on the schools for mitigation efforts. So injury associated with implementing a guideline, not required by the governor or Bessie, is squarely on you. The governor does not require a doctor's note. Federal law requires an individual be given the right to refuse. It's time to let the parents decide what's best for their children. Thank you.
Tiffany, did you have? And, and I think we had talked about the group having three to four people speak.
Okay, I don't know who exactly, I know who this means, but I, I can't.
Is it more than one group here?
Possibly. I mean, there'd be.
I mean, I don't know. Sure. Okay.
So you want me to call out mine, that I have this one, and then they speak and then the rest of them?
I think that would be good. You're the one that I communicated to, to, that had requested to be on the agenda. And I said I would, we would entertain yours, yes. Yes, there's a question on the board.
No, I was just going to ask Mr. Noah, but I think, I think the law specifically states that even if it's. even if it's more than one group, and if it's one agenda item, that you can, the president and the board has the discretion to allow however many people.
That is correct.
A reasonable amount.
That is correct.
That's what it's supposed to be. I think it had told.
Okay.
My na, my name is Vladimir Arias and.
You can put the mic down, man.
I went to school.
Took the mic. Put it down so we can talk.
Okay, just, just gonna tell you what you told me. I went, I went to school at Highland Elementary, so I just want to say that in my experience with these face masks, seven to eight hours a day does not, it, it, it's not good. For, so. Whenever I wear these masks, I experience, like, I, I start losing focus and it gets really, really hard to breathe.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Green. I am, I'm here to represent, obviously, those, the children who can't come here and represent themselves. They don't have a voice in the issue. Firstly, my name is Sarah Green, and I'm a parent professional. I worked at Razor Middle School the last two years. I'm a translator and interpreter, so you could imagine the difficulties of doing my job with a mask and also communicating in Spanish with, with students from ver, a variety of different, of different backgrounds, so. So, but I just want to talk about my experience and how it, how it fueled, fueled this, me standing up to speak out. So, we, as we returned to school, post, you know, post lockdown, I, you know, I, we, I'm a rule follower too, like big time, and so I do, I want to do everything just as, you know, just as I should, but I also know when the rules begin to endanger or, or stricken my, you know, my ability to live life freely, it's, it's time to, it's time to say something. So that's why I'm here. So around, I guess, I, I began to notice, a couple of months into returning to work, brick and mortar, I began to notice around 10:30, my vision would begin to get blurry. And it took me probably maybe a week to realize what was going on. But, so my vision would get blurry and then, but then even beyond that, months into this, I, I would just, you know, I'd go to the bathroom, anything I could, just to, just take some deep breaths, but it didn't, it wasn't enough. It wasn't enough. So months into it, I literally was having cognitively, I, I could sense that the effect that it was having on me, and then I began to think about the children and how this must really affect their ability to learn and to think clearly and to make, to make good choices. So as far as like, okay, if you're not getting enough oxygen to the brain, I know that it's gonna, it's gonna impair your judgment, it's gonna impair your ability to, to process the material that you're being taught, I suppose you could say. But in, in the midst of all this, I'm also, you know, I like to research. I want to know the facts. I want to know the truth. And to that note, I want to challenge something that was said, saying that you all have to do what you're told. I don't think that's true. I think that you're here to represent us. I think that you are here specifically to represent us. So if you just have to do what you're told, then, then how, how, how will that ever represent us? How, how, you know, to, to communicate back, you know, this is what, this is what parents, this is what teachers, this is, these are what the people are saying. This, and you hear the facts, so here are the facts. I know for a fact that the mask, I think that it's wise to wear a mask if you're infected. Like if you have COVID, I believe that it is, but, but does it prevent the transmission of viral particles through the mask? No, it doesn't. It doesn't. There's science to prove that, and scientists speak out and they get censored. And maybe, you know, that's not why I'm here today though, but I just do want to say that I, I don't think this is, this, I don't think this is lawful, and I think that, I think that the children, the children need, we need to consider them first. We need to consider them first and how, how this affects their learning abilities. Because if I, as, as a grown adult who, who can, you know, I can run to the bathroom, huh, and take a few breaths, well, if you allow every student to do that, they will be spending, they will be spending so much time, they're not allowed, they're not even allowed that. They're not allowed that. There's no way for them to be allowed that, especially where I am, maybe in a kindergarten class where you could have a little cubicle, here you go, come stand over here and calm down. But what about middle, middle schoolers? They have, they already have so many different, so many different challenges that they're facing, just in being an adolescent. And then they don't have anywhere to go to where they can pull down their mask, and the teachers are pressured to keep the mask, put your mask on, put your mask on. That's what I experienced. And it was very disheartening for me to have to, to tell them repeatedly, put your mask on, when I knew what it was doing to them, because it was doing the same thing to me. And, and so that's why I'm here, and I hope, I really hope that after, after hearing everything that you hear today, that you will carefully and prayerfully consider the, the positions that you all have. You have, you have, you have, you're in a place where you can say, you know what? Consider this, whoever else above you, consider this. And, 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 and then you have, you have the power to change, to change this. I believe that. And I know, I know to some extent, you know, the law is the law, and, and, but, but I know, I know that other people know it better than me, so like what the testimony you just heard before me, there's a lot there to consider. And, but before that, you know, here we go, here's, consider them. Consider them, and I have one more outside. He wasn't allowed to come in. Another thing that I'd like to say. Abel, Abel's from, he was, he was in kindergarten last year. He didn't have to wear a mask, and you, you, you mentioned that. My concern, being a mother of three boys and, you know, just, I just love children and I know them, I feel like the mask is gonna actually be more of a, more of a, a risk of contaminant. Because, because they don't, they don't understand. They don't understand that this mask, they're gonna be cleaning up the table with it and wearing it, you know, wearing it on their heads and slopping mask. That's my, another concern for him, because, you know, they just don't understand the, the risk of, of, you know, you're not supposed to take it off, you're not supposed to touch it, and all these things that could become potentially, make it more, more of a risk than a, than a benefit. All the breathing, you know, re-breathing CO2 aside, that's one thing I'm concerned about for, for him. You know, little kids, they do all kind of silly stuff. And, you know, they, they won't be wiping their nose with it and then smearing it on the table, and then what? How is that gonna benefit them? So I'm, I guess that's why I want to, I don't know how much time I've, I've been talking, but I felt a duty for my kids, the kids that I teach, the kids that I help at, at, you know, where I work, but also my children to say, you know, to say something and to be here and to be present, because otherwise you guys wouldn't, you, maybe you wouldn't know, you wouldn't recognize that this is, this is, this is important. This is an important issue, and I believe that it can be, there can be some change concerning, concerning the mask issue.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
My name is Drake Graves. Y'all know many of me from some of the organizations that I represent, but today I'm here as a concerned parent, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today and take a minute to thank the teachers and administrators for their tireless efforts and all that they do for our kids. Y'all's work goes unnoticed and undervalued, and you are appreciated. I have a five-year-old daughter who is supposed to make the transition from private school to public school this year. Last year was hard enough, wearing the mask, you know, whenever you're in a community setting at lunch, or whatever it may be. So to hear now that the mask mandate has been changed from the age of eight to the age of five is very disheartening to hear. At this point, we are now having to consider withdrawing her from the Washoe Parish school system. At the age of five, children are learning the alphabet, they're learning phonics, they're learning to speak sentences, they're learning how to interact with one another and other children. And this mask mandate that's being pushed on our children is to the detriment of their education as well as their cognitive learning abilities. Think about it, when you're teaching a child how to say about ah, ah, oh, oh, you use your mouth and they watch that, and that's how they recognize how to make that sound. Without the ability to do that through these masks, they're, they're at a disservice from this. She's already experiencing learning delays, and unfortunately, she's unable to be tested for dyslexia until the age of five. So we have to do the best that we can with what we have at home and what we have in the classroom. So in addition to that, the board has the ability to modify this, has the ability to modify the age requirement that it was previously set for the age of eight, because five-year-olds do not understand why they have to wear this mask. In addition to that, the parents are concerned, small business owners are concerned, many are having to choose to go to, either go to work or stay home with their kids. Out of this, many business owners are even exploring the option to allow their office spaces to be utilized for homeschooling in order to provide an education that is outside of the public school system. Our hopes in doing this is that not only will our children be, will be able to interact with one another as a normal child, as you and I had the privilege of doing in school, but as well as have the tools necessary to continue their edu, early childhood, early childhood development. These children are being forced to wear masks for up to seven hours a day, and they don't understand why the only place they can go without one. I have a two-month-old little boy. He's not wearing a mask. So if I'm making a five-year-old wear a mask, shouldn't we make a four-year-old? Shouldn't we make a two, a three, a two-month-old? The masks don't stop the transmission of this virus, and neither do the vaccine. I wanted to touch on the VIP learning situation really quickly. I've had many parents that have called in and requested to be placed in the VIP learning program, only to be told that it is closed. At the very least, this board should, should open this program back up following the release of information regarding the operations of the school system as of this week. The only choice we as parents have is to either do what we say at the schools, comply, submit regardless of what you believe, or to pull them out. And if we pull these kids out of these schools and we go into homeschools, say that you lose 10 kids from each school, lose 40 students out of Calhoun by itself. At MFP funding of $1,800 roughly for gifted and talented students, a standard child being funded at $694 apiece, plus $189 technology fee per student, you would be looking at losing approximately $75,000 in MFP funding alone. I urge you to take the testimonies and please give them before you today under strong consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Drake.
Hi there. Thank, good afternoon. I'm Dr. Mike Rahm, and I'm an emergency room doctor here in town, but today I'm representing my little five-year-old as a concerned parent as he's entering elementary school as well. This year, and standing here honestly is very hard. I've seen so much death and destruction with so many families this year. Even my own colleagues have died. My mentors, family members, close friends. This information about masks being ineffective is a lie. It's a lie. We have good data. I have cases from Utah, Missouri, and even Florida where the school districts enforce strict mask mandates, and they significantly reduced the spread of COVID in their school district. Masks work. I use them in the ER every day to keep my patients safe and keep my family safe. All of this about a medical excuse, there's very few cases in which that's the case, certainly with a mental disorder. That can be unexplained and it's understood, and I have a lot of respect for people who are caring for those that have difficulties with learning disabilities. But for everybody else, without universal masking, we're not protecting everybody. If you relegate masks to only those who are sick, we know that people can spread it the days before they start showing symptoms. We've known that since March of last year. I've seen it myself. This is a very hard issue for me, and I hope you understand. I've come here to Monroe as a missionary doctor. I was trained at a Christian residency program in Tulsa, Oklahoma. I've served across the world. I've been taking care of very sick and injured people, and this has been honestly the hardest year of my life. I hope you'll take time to consider this, and I, I appreciate the testimonies of the other parents and hearing about their experiences as well. But I will say that wearing a mask is kind, consider it. It's keeping our people safe. If you were in a movie theater and you stood up and made a loud noise, they, that's your personal choice to stand up and make noise and do whatever you want, right? You'd be quickly ushered out. At least in that case, you're not risking the lives of other people. In this case, you are. If you're taking off your mask, if not everybody is wearing their mask, we're endangering both their parents and now even the children themselves. Here in Louisiana, we have the highest rate of COVID in the entire world. So for us to even consider backing off a mask mandate would be, is unimaginable. It's unbelievable. I implore you before God that you don't listen to any of the lies that are being passed around. This is not of God. This is, this is Satan comes to kill, steal, and destroy, and I'm seeing that here in my town, and I don't want any part of it anymore. Do you have any questions?
What hospital do you work at?
St. Francis Medical Center.
How long you been there?
I've been there for three years.
Three years?
Yes, and before that I was an assistant professor of medicine up in Tulsa, Oklahoma, at the University of Oklahoma. And before that, I've been doing medical missions in Papua New Guinea, Kenya, China, Philippines, and Mexico as well.
So if you've been there three years, you were there when it started?
Yes, sir. In fact, my parents are from Wuhan, China. They were serving there when the lockdowns happened. And their family and friends have gone through immense struggles there, and I'm grateful for the freedoms we've had here in not restricting us quite so severely. However, they are actually containing the virus, and people are not dying as severely as we are here. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Robyn.
Stacy Hodge here, and I'm with the Washoe Parish LA, what is it? Parents' Choice LA with Tiffany and some of the others. And I do, I do appreciate y'all taking the time to let us stand up and, and to hear our voices. I appreciate that there are opinions on both sides of the fence, but the fact is, is opinions aren't why we're here. It's not about the opinions. And I would like to respond to what he said about masks. If masks work, we should have the right to choose to wear one or not. If your mask works, then why does it matter if I have one on, if it's my choice not to wear one? But that's not what I came here to say. I appreciate y'all opening this service in prayer. That means a lot to me as a Christian. It tells me that you're a good God-fearing people and that you want to see the right thing done for everyone involved and included. I would hope that the decisions that are made are godly decisions, not decisions made based on opinions or what someone says, or I hope that they're made lawfully and legally. Louisiana law tells us we do things in the best interest of our children. There is way too much that is unknown to tell our kids that they have to wear a mask day in and day out. God created family. God created the man and the woman, and he gave children to the parents. Y'all forgive me, I'm a little nervous, but. Y'all forgive me, I'm a little nervous because I understand the weight of the decision that needs to be made. Our children's health and well-being and their futures are at stake and there's way too much unknown about the effects of mask-wearing for long-term, long periods of time. I believe wholeheartedly that it is our right as the parent. As parents, we were given our children and we have been advocating for those children since birth, what's best for those children, what their needs are, we know them intimately. The government should not have a say in what's medically best for our children. We should have a say. We should have the right to decide whether our child wears a mask or don't. For the parents who believe that masks are effective and that they work, well then mask your child and send them to school. For the parents who do not believe that masks are effective against COVID and the numbers prove that they don't, that the information on the boxes themselves where you got your paper medical mask will tell you that it's not effective. As parents, it should be our right whether we send our child to school in a mask or not. Allowing the government to make this decision for us is setting a very dangerous precedent. I don't believe that their decision-making on our behalf is legal, lawful. I believe that it's dangerous. I also want to state that I am not necessarily against masks or vaccinations, although that's not what we're here to talk about. I am pro-choice. I'm here today to fight for the parents to have a choice, to mask their child or not to mask their child. It should be up to the parent, not the government, not our governor. Our governor is supposed to speak for the people. We, the people, have not had a voice. Only one side thus far has had a voice and that is not, that's not fair. He shouldn't be able to decide for us. Take notes. From Texas and Florida. Texas has recently decided, the Texas governor, excuse me, a new executive order from Governor Abbott. The government, governmental entities cannot mandate masks, local governments cannot limit capacities for businesses and there are others, but the governor should not be able to mandate masks. That's taking away from our rights. Florida governor has done similar things. He's, DeSantis has gone on to even withhold paychecks of school officials who implement mask mandates.
But that's not...
I applaud them. I applaud them.
Stacy, that's five minutes already, so can you bring it to an end?
Okay. I want to go on to say that I have a five-year-old who also is leaving kindergarten, going on to first grade. The only reason she is able to move on to first grade is because we spent time with her over the summer for her to be able to move forward. She was at a private school last year who did not have mask mandates, who went the entire year, over 200 students and faculty members, and had seven, is that right? Six, excuse me, six cases of COVID in the entire school for the entire year. To me, that's proof enough that a mask didn't stop or make it worse, right? They didn't wear a mask. They cleaned their desks and their areas, they washed their hands, and they went about their day as normal. And they didn't have an increased number of cases of COVID in the school. I hope that y'all will consider, every parent should have a choice.
Thank you.
Hello, guys. I wasn't even planning on being here, but here I am at Menderson's eighth grade. Mr. Bryan was my principal, but this is really neat. I like this. But I know it's not fun. This is not fun. I'm Tara Daniel, by the way. It's nice to see all you guys. Nice to see you, Ms. May. So I have just, you know, when they tell you to come speak, have three or four bullet points and stick to your points. I made it even simpler than that. I just have three words, "Proof not required." That's how I'm standing here today. That's how I got in the front door. I said that I have a medical condition and the proof is not required. And that's amazing. There was no argument, there was no disputing it. I don't want to dispute with anybody over this COVID. It's horrible. It's absolutely horrible. And I know we don't want to wear masks. I know no one enjoys this. How could you enjoy it? And, you know, I'm standing up here, I have three little boys and my kids go to private school, but they follow you, they follow the Washita Parish School Board's, y'all's rules. So, you know, essentially, that's what I have to go by. But, you know, I'm standing up here for them, my little three and four-year-old, like he said, who's gonna say they're not gonna have to wear masks soon? Lord knows, that's gonna be terrible, you know? I mean, they couldn't say that they didn't want to wear a mask, but we all know they wouldn't want to wear a mask, you know? But anyways, I'm supposed to not get off point and all that stuff, but, so all I want to say is, the governor's order, y'all know it, we all know it, it just says, "Proof not required." If we do that, it's simple. That's it. And you guys will be heroes to the entire state and everybody else. You'll be like, these guys, they got it right. They followed what the governor said. He said, "Proof not required," and they did it. They left it up to the parents because you guys are parents. You guys don't want anybody else telling y'all what to do. I know y'all, I'm not reading your minds. I think we're all thinking the same thing. But anyways, I shouldn't be assuming. I'm gonna end with just thank you for your prayer, Mr. Vice President. Liberty and freedom, that's what we're all here for. And that's all I'm asking for is freedom and liberty. And I know, Mr. Coke, Don, Dr. Coker, I know that you said that children, you're in the best interest for them. Well, the best interest is just please let us as parents make the decision. You know, that's all. That's all I want to say. Thank y'all.
Thanks, Tara.
This is neat. Bye, guys.
Hello. I see a couple of familiar faces. My name's Shayna Frost. I'm just here as a concerned parent. Prior to becoming a stay-at-home mom, I was a licensed counselor for a nonprofit here in town. I'm concerned about their mental health, desperately concerned. There's no way to know how this is going to impact them. My daughter, my daughter's going into second grade and she wants to go to school. She loves her school. Drew School's an amazing school. We have great schools in Washita Parish. We have amazing schools in Washita Parish. I can't send my baby to school for eight hours a day in a mask. It's going to affect her. It's going to affect her. I know that. I know that because I saw it. I mean, I didn't have, we didn't have masks when I was working. I have a set of twins that are four, so they'll be coming up next year through the school. I want my kids to go to public school. That is my desire. That is what my babies want. Let's take my boys, for instance. One of them struggled with speech. Many of y'all have, many, many people in here have had their kids struggle with speech. Just today, I was dropping him off at a babysitter so I could be here to advocate for my kids and he was trying to say a word. And I said, "Baby, that's not right. Watch my mouth. Watch my mouth." He said the word right after he watched my mouth. How do you expect these kids in these foundational grades of kindergarten, first grade, second grade, they're learning to read and they can't watch a mouth? All I'm asking for, all I'm asking for, and I know y'all have heard so many testimonies and you're probably like zoning out, I'm asking you to please consider, let it be a parent's choice. Her daddy and I know what's best. We know what's best. Not the governor, nobody else knows what's best for their child, but the guardian of the child. That's what I'm here for. And let me just say, I live literally two minutes from Drew School, okay? I can't get no internet. Nobody will service me. AT&amp;T will not, Verizon doesn't have it even here yet. I have no internet, none. I could get Dish, but it zaps it within the first three hours of using it. I can get no internet. Therefore, this VIP, which by the way, I do think needs to be reopened, okay, that's only fair, but this VIP, just throw them into VIP. No, it doesn't work for people like me. Not everybody can afford the internet, number one, nor can they get access to the internet, which is what is in our household. So VIP doesn't work. So now it's either withdraw, back to what Drake Graves said, it's either withdraw or and homeschool. That's it. Like, we have no options here. There's no options for the rest of us who are saying, "If you want your kid to wear a mask, wear a mask." We just don't want, we just want the choice to, for it to be ours. We're not saying anti-mask. It's your choice, it's your right to be able to do that. But it's also my choice for my child not to wear one. So VIP is not an option because we have no internet. And then the only other thing is to homeschool. Okay, well, that's gonna be fun. But that's where I'm at. I'm seriously, and my husband and I are overwhelmed, overwhelmed with this decision. Just asking you, I'm just, I'm begging, I am begging you, please let it be parent's choice. And I thank you, I thank you so much for listening to me. I appreciate all that y'all are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Shayna.
President, you do know that you can set a moratorium on the number of people that...
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Coker, thank you for having me. My name is Nicholas Farrar. I live at 107 Fleetwood Drive. I'm a taxpayer here in Washita Parish. I'm not a scientist, but I can do basic math. This is the LDH data from LDH's own website. Nine children under the age of 19 have died of COVID-19 in Louisiana. Total. You're instituting a mask mandate. More children have died of obesity in Louisiana in that time period than of COVID-19. What are we doing about that? If, that's if you trust the numbers. If you'll remember, Mr. Hillburn with Washita Parish Homeland Security last year released data from Homeland, from the Department of Health, and shortly after that, the governor instituted a nondisclosure agreement because there were discrepancies found in the state's own data. So if you're going on the state's data, good luck. A wise man once told me two things can be true at the same time. Thousands of Americans have died of COVID-19 and it's tragic, but putting masks on our children doesn't have to make things better. I've fought with my son to stay in a chair for the last hour. Can you imagine what his first-grade teacher is gonna do to have to try and keep him in a mask? Do you want to educate children or do you want to train them to wear masks? In closing, you have standards for the chemicals that you use to clean toilets and desks. What standards do you have for the mask you're asking our children to wear? All, there are no standards. It's not an N95, it's not a KN95, it's not a surgical mask. So we have higher standards for our toilets than the masks that you're wanting our children to wear. You were elected by the taxpayers of Washita Parish, not John Bell Edwards, not the Department of Education, and not the Bessie Board, the voters of Washita Parish. I'm asking that you listen to them and respect their will to not force their children to wear masks. You have a tax that you're about to ask, or I'm sorry, you have debt that you're about to ask the voters of Washita Parish to allow you to take. Please respect their wish to not force their children to wear masks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nicholas.
I'm a black one for Parents' Choice LA, but I know for other parents that most people say that that's not good. Red, we're red. So if we're in red...
Can you come to the mic, please? We YouTube these meetings?
We can take two more, ma'am. Two more. Okay. So I'll go and... Okay, so first of all, I ask that you do not start the time until the Lord speaks because I am sent here by the Lord. I'm His warrior that was called out and whatever is about to be said is from Him, okay? I didn't ask for this. This was revealed to me last week. Our community has assembled because of this, okay? I'm just gonna read Scripture that the Lord revealed to me just a moment ago, okay? This is Jeremiah 20:11. "But the Lord is with me as a mighty awesome one. Therefore my persecutors will stumble and will not prevail. They will be greatly ashamed, for they will not prosper. Their everlasting confusion will never be forgotten." So Parents' Choice LA started out as just giving parents in our community an outlet to communicate was it, okay? Since then, nonprofit organizations, lawyers, pediatricians, doctors that are silenced, they cannot submit anything in writing, they can only give verbal testament because AMA, Pediatrics Board, et cetera, are watching, okay? They can be stripped of licensing. So you can have a doctor come up here and represent the side that is promoted, but those that are on the other side, they cannot. They cannot. They are hushed, okay? So I have folders printed out for you guys. Not only am I here in representation of these parents and children, okay? By the way, my name's Tiffany Hatton. I resigned from Washita Parish School Board last year when the pandemic broke out, okay? I am home now, so I believe that the Lord gave me my experience that I endured in my six-and-a-half professional years for this specific time, okay? So I have folders of teacher, coaches, board employees, testimonies. They are submitting them to me daily, hundreds, okay? I don't have the funds to print all those out, but I did make folders of the ones that wanted their testimony in your hands and I do pray that you will actually consider your teachers, okay? And I can give these to you whenever you need them. So I'm just gonna read some of the teacher concerns. Just bear with me because it's easy to be in a classroom talking to, you know, to small groups and stuff, but it's not easy whenever you're speaking in front of your peers, okay? So one teacher concern that this specific teacher has is the lack of COVID sick days for teachers. So I was told today, informed that teachers were announced yesterday that they will not be given COVID sick days. I will have all this in writing. I would love to meet you guys and sit down with you and speak more on this, but I'm just gonna read you her words. "If we as teachers are exposed, we are still being forced to quarantine, which is fine, but we are being forced to use our treasured sick days. I had a baby last year, so I only have the 10 we are given at the start of the year. One exposure would use all of my sick days, leaving none for children's doctor's appointments of common illness that isn't COVID-related. This seems ridiculous to me considering how even those that have received the vaccine are now found to pass on COVID and should be required to quarantine if exposed. We had several teachers last year that were exposed multiple times throughout the year and forced to quarantine." The other teacher concerns that are being brought to our attention, and again, these are coming in every day, these teachers want to be kept anonymous until they see whose support they're gonna receive, okay? So the teacher concerns were this. Let me find one that I'm looking for, please. So the teachers are sending in notice to me that the cleaning supplies, the paper towels specifically, specifically, paper towels, Germex, Clorox wipes, and spray that they're sanitizing with. There was not more given by their principals. It was they were given it and then they were told to tell parents to bring in Germex, paper towels, et cetera, et cetera, weekly, bi-weekly for their kids. There are parents here that can tell you they were contacted by their teacher with that information. Nothing's in writing, we know how the, we know how this works, nothing's gonna be in writing, no voicemails, no emails, no paper trails, okay? And we get that, we do. And we respect that because, you know, you're doing what you think is best, okay? So medical exemptions are not being accepted verbally or in writing given by... Um, so, medical exemptions are not being accepted verbally or in writing, given by AG Landry. Um, I do have doctors and pretty pediatricians meeting today in our community. They are gonna draft their concerns, and they are gonna submit them to me anonymously, okay? Um, the other thing is teachers are saying, um, not only that, but teachers that do, are incentivized to get the vaccine, they will get sick days. And, um, those that choose not to are, will not. That is discrimination, um, okay? Um, they're concerned about contact tracing. What does this mean? Um, what is this gonna look like? There's been no transparency to teachers as of yesterday. Nothing other than verbal, you know, this is, we're waiting for the board to meet and, and all those things. And we're meeting today, and we have amazing testimonies from these children, guys, and I really hope that you, you felt that. Um, so this is what teachers are asking. They're asking for either virtual to be opened up and allow teachers that have children that they do not want in these environments to be offered to teach virtually. They are asking for the option to delay school until after Labor Day. Scientists and doctors are saying mid-September, they believe that this will calm down, and there won't be a surge. Why are you gonna send students back into the classroom knowing that this can endanger their lives? And the faculty, okay? Um, the other question or, um, uh, concern that they had as a body was, um, they are...
President, I, I apologize, ma'am, I promise you. But from my experience, subject has to be germane to what's on the agenda.
Oh, this is?
No, yes, ma'am. I'm just saying.
Well, these are the teachers saying that, um, we still don't know what we're doing, and y'all are presenting the, the protocols right now, so I'm addressing those in representation of the teachers. Um, so, the teachers want options as well, okay? Um, I have a lot of information, and I could not sit here and do it in three to four minutes. And I am requesting that the board pause. No vote today. There are parents that need to be heard, and they want to meet with you so desperately. They could not get off work. Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds are wanting to reach out to you. Pause, no vote today. We're asking that you make another board meeting specifically for this in the evening, 6 o'clock, that parents can attend and hear you, and you hear them as well. And we have students that couldn't even come inside from all levels that want y'all to hear them as well, okay? Um, who do you want me to give these folders of testimonies to?
You can give them to Mr. Geis right here, and he'll, he can pass them out.
And there should be enough for everyone. Um, so, or, was that my time to?
Do it later.
No, I, I'm not the president, I'm just simply saying, my experience...
There's, there's people here that are wanting to be heard, and I understand that. Um, this movement is ordained by God. And I know that, um, this isn't just stopping here. I'm being sent to Bessie next week. Um, God's making provisions for that. So I just want you to know that, um, it's not just the parents. This is, this is very ordained. Thank you.
Let's go have one more, please.
Pardon me?
One more. I need sixty seconds, and that's it.
Okay.
I, I won't be long, I'm sorry. Uh, my name is Susan Ellis. I have two children who attend Calhoun Middle, one in sixth grade and one in eighth grade. Um, I had so much that I was gonna say today, but all of these parents and other people have touched base so well. Um, I, as a parent, I kept my kids home and did virtual last year because I could not see them wearing a mask all day long because it is not healthy for them. I don't care what anybody says. But my children have, um, they were gonna come today and speak, but they decided not to, and I'm, I'm glad that they did, given the limited capacity. So I'm going to read my kids' words, my eleven-year-old and my twelve-year-old. I'm going to read their words and how it affects them. Um, my son Connor, uh, he says, "I'm eleven years old and moving into sixth grade. In this paragraph, I will explain why I think masks negatively affect our body and health." This is from an eleven-year-old. "The first reason is that the masks we wear build up carbon dioxide when exhaling, which makes us vulnerable to various sicknesses such as a simple cold, all the way up to the flu, which there has been, you know, studies done, and there are bacteria that cause meningitis, strep, and Lyme disease, which from personal experience, I can tell you, I don't want anybody to have to endure, especially not a child." Um, he says, "My next reason is how quickly changes were applied to our society in total. As an example, they affected our breathing, hence lung failures, hyperventilating, and borderline suffocation." Um, he has anxiety. He is claustrophobic. And, um, it, it's, it's just, it's not good for the kids. It's not good for the kids at all. Um, like I said, I will be quick, and my daughter, who, um, is going into eighth grade this year, we plan on going in person until this whole mask mandate stuff came around, and I agree, parents should have a choice. It's, it's, there are kids. The government doesn't own them. Nobody owns them, and y'all have the power to say it's parents' choice. You want to send your kids in a mask, perfect. If you don't, so be it. And, you know, not subject them to daily testing, which is a whole different story. Um, my daughter Lily, who's going into eighth grade, says, "I'm going, I'm growing up in a religious family. We believe in God and easy turnmowers. If you get it, you get it. The virus is like a cold. It affects your respiratory system and sinuses. The flu is worse. You don't see a pandemic with masks and so six feet distancing for the flu, right? A sickness, AIDS, chickenpox, flu, type A and B. There are all sicknesses, and so is the coronavirus. Personally, I believe masks have no effect on keeping the virus out, but they do have an effect on hypercapnia. This is where, when there is excess carbon dioxide in the body. Having a mask on, you're not able to get fresh oxygen, which anybody wearing a mask right now knows that, um, when you need it. This can result in dizziness, relentlessness, restlessness, I'm sorry. I'm the relentless one. Um, increased heart rate, et cetera. Hypercapnia can cause loss of consciousness and even seizures. I just want my life back. I want to walk down the halls chatting. I even miss math. She hates math." "Socializing is a, is an important skill in someone's life, a child's life. Being isolated from others takes a great deal from your time as a young person. Put yourself in our situation. I had to get stronger glasses because of the computer." Which, we're having to get stronger glasses again. "I was excited to take the trash out because maybe there, maybe there would be a car, you know? Just wait for somebody going down the road. The headaches and weight gain from being inside all day, my mental and physical pain from staying up till midnight doing homework, and she was overloaded, and it was, it was terrible. Personally, I'm not a homebody. I like to get out and move, walk around the dollar store, dancing to music in the aisles. Life without people is suffocating. I don't get to express my voice as much. See all my friends from the last years. Imagine seeing everyone you know, then not the next day. Rough, right? Now, you may be wondering, if the kids come home with COVID and give it to the parents, then what? Those same parents survived eating dirt and using bathrooms outside. If a parent gets the virus, they will take all the means necessary to keep others and their children safe. Nobody wants to be sick. But you would have your life snatched away, or endure, but would you have your life snatched away or endure a sickness for a week? You know? Your life taken from you just because, oh, hey, stroke of a pen. Take away your vit- take your vitamins and don't grow up too fast. The responsibility of making sure you're following every regulation necessary is backbreaking. And they even, are they even necessary? I believe we're being dramatic about the common cold with a hint of engineered work. Twelve-year-old. Thank you for listening to my conclusion about how masks affected me personally. And that's not just the masks, that is the virtual. Both of my children suffered graves and, and mentally, emotionally, throughout virtual, but I can't let them go to school and be put in a mask all day long. That is not healthy. And like so many, like the other parents have said, it's our choice. And we ask you guys to take your power that you have to put the choice of masking or not back in the hands of the parents. And if the conclusion isn't come to that it's optional, I ask that you please open back up the virtual enrollment. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
My name is Dalton Fowler. Just a concerned parent. Really had no intention of speaking today, but one key thing that was brought up, I disagree with. Y'all said a while ago that y'all's hands are tied. They're not. I've also spoken to a member of this board and talked to them about my concerns. They also said, this member did, that they disagree with the mandate, but they can't really go against it because they're afraid of the state pulling funds. Now, when a state oversteps, the local government has not the right, but the duty, the duty to protect Washtau Parish's citizens. Do not let our freedoms be taken away. Do not let the threat of a loss of money from the state, do not let that influence your decision. No matter your choice today, I can't change your mind or make you vote one way or the other, but no matter your choice, own your choice. Do not say your hands are tied because it's not. Y'all represent us. State oversteps, y'all do have the power. We voted y'all in. This is our parish. Tell the state, get out. This is our freedom.
Thank you.
We, we went down to the last two. I gave y'all three, and now the three's over, so we're gonna have to call this out.
I'm a private citizen.
Can we ask, can we ask for a separate meeting just so y'all can hear your fear?
I'm, I'm a private citizen.
I'm a private citizen as well.
I'm not with this organization.
We just had four speakers is what we agreed to, four.
You've already agreed.
Well, we've gonna have ten.
I'm a Washtau parish.
Well, I didn't say y'all wasn't. I agree with you. You're a hundred percent right. But with four speakers about this subject was what we had.
Legally, what we had.
Legally, what we had.
You just said in the meeting earlier that you'd listened to us.
Hey, well, we could go on to Darv.
Well, let's go on to Darv then. This is, this is pretty important, I think.
Oh, well, I don't agree.
My name is Paul Dunn. I'm a local business owner here. I also have a child in this school system. Mr. Coker, you opened this meeting up by saying that you are, you are a law follower, a rule follower, okay? And I'd like a response back from you, Dr. Coker. Proof not required. Proof not required.
Well, let me, let me tell you, you need to be addressing the board. They make the decisions.
I understand, but I'm just saying, you opened this meeting up saying that you were a rule follower, a law-abiding person, okay? And you also stated that this is a mandate, it's not a law, okay? I'm just asking you, proof is not required.
From our attorneys, uh, let me get your name once again.
My name was Paul Dunn.
Okay, Paul.
I'm a local business owner here, and I also have a child, well, I may not have a child much longer in the school system, depending on how this turns out.
I guess, you know, from, from my perspective, I, I appreciate everybody's comments today. I really do, you know?
I have a lot of points I do want to share with y'all.
And I sympathize with everyone's comments, and I understand everyone's comments, okay? And based on what I've heard today, and I've, I've been listening to all the testimonies, based on what I've heard, the crux of y'all's concern is the mandate for your child to wear a mask, uh, from a medical exclusion standpoint.
Uh, I guess my question to Elmer, Dr. Coker, is what does the governor mandate, or does he mandate under his mask requirement regarding the medical exclusion privileges that the parents have, Elmer? Uh, we've heard some testimony from the parents that, hey, the governor doesn't mandate that it has to be medically driven on a, on a mask exclusion for a child. Uh, is that true? Or what kind of guidance do we have from the governor on his mandate? And what, how does that impact or reflect on our policy that we're gonna adopt today?
Mr. Manley, the proclamation 137 JBE that was issued last week addresses, has been discussed, wearing the mask indoors. Uh, there are, uh, eight different things that are itemized in the proclamation, and one of them that would be, I guess, considered, uh, exceptions. Uh, number three says, "Any individual with a medical condition that prevents the wearing of a face covering." And so I think that's what some of the references have been made to are about the medical condition. Uh, the governor has sent...
The governor does require the medical exemption or an exception to a mask mandate. Is that what you're saying?
Well, it says, "These requirements do not apply to individuals with a medical condition that prevents the wearing of a face covering." Well, how do you establish that? How do you establish that? And the governor has since issued a letter, uh, following up and trying to clarify this proclamation that was issued last week. And we're all trying to make, you know, reasonable sense out of all this. Uh, and it's, and it's our opinion, our legal opinion, our firm's opinion, and it's the opinion, I think, of others, not just us, that there has to be some criteria, and there, there can be some requirement to establish what that medical condition is. And so there's a form, uh, that has been developed, and basically it's just to ask, uh, you know, from the parents, you know, what is, what's the nature of that? And it requires some kind of medical documentation, uh, medical documentation from a physician or a medical provider that briefly, uh, outlines what the situation is, what the issue is, uh, that would, uh, ask for the mask exemption. Now, some have asked, instead of a mask, uh, to wear the plastic shield or the pla- plastic face covering. So that's the other, uh, issue. If there's a problem with the child for asthma or some medical-related reason, well, then, uh, tha- that's another contingency that's out there is a, a mask with a cloth covering, and that, uh, exemption, that language has been circulated, uh, around the state. So, uh, you know, it, it's our opinion in, in, you know...
So is this directive, is guidance coming specifically from the governor regarding what you just said?
Well, then, again, this is the proclamation. It says, "Individuals with medical conditions, uh, don't have to comply with that." I think the board, I think, uh, uh, they're entitled to basically pursue and ask for documentation. Uh, there may be those that disagree with that, but that's the current, uh, legal position that we're advising to comply with the governor's mandate that expires on September the first, that, uh, if you're trying to utilize one of these eight, and I'll refer to it as an exception, if you're trying to utilize one of those eight exceptions, this is number three, that it's fair and reasonable to ask a medical provider to provide what that condition is very briefly in summation, and that essentially is an exception for wearing the mask. And so an alternative that's been offered in lieu of a mask, if you provide that documentation, is, okay, here's the documentation, but, uh, we'll allow a shield, and there's also, the shield has a cloth covering at the bottom. You're probably familiar with that. But, uh, we believe that that is enforceable. We believe that's, uh, the intent of the governor's proclamation in his letter that he submitted, uh, last week to clarify that. Uh, that's, that's what we believe, and that's our, that's our opinion, that you, uh, can, uh, on number three, uh, ask for some kind of documentation of what the medical condition might be that would exempt you from the mask mandate.
And that's basically what our policy outlines here, that we're gonna vote on the date, Dr. Coker, that we're requiring some type of medical...
Correct.
...uh, information regarding the exception.
So proof would be required, is that what you're telling me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right. That's all I have.
Thanks, Paul.
I don't wanna talk to any of you about the medical side of things because y'all have already clearly been covered in that, but I'm going to leave these two documents with you. Um, this one is from a medical journal, clearly telling you masks do not work. And this is from the Marines.
Excuse me, just a minute. Can you give us your name?
Francesca Fuller. Um, I don't know where y'all want me to leave these, but, okay. I have a heart condition, and my heart is literally beating out of my chest.
I have a heart condition and my heart is literally beating out of my chest right now for the nerves. Um.
We'll just take some deep breaths.
I know. I'm a native here. I was born and raised in northeast, northeast Louisiana. I graduated from West Monroe High School in two thousand and seven. You were my principal. Um, and I graduated from ULM in two thousand and thirteen with a bachelor of arts in Spanish. I started out in childhood education. I have eighteen hours of psychology under my belt as well. And the lady earlier that brought the concerns to you about the psychological well-being of the children is very valid. And I urge each and every one of you, because I bet you all have grandchildren, I urge each and every one of you to think very, very much on the psychological well-being of the children and the mask and all the mandates and the things that y'all are telling them like you're going to kill your grandparents if you don't wear them. Can you imagine what that is doing to eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen-year-olds? I have a story to tell you. In the fifth grade, I did a history project on the Holocaust and I won second place. And I don't say that as a brag, but to tell you that I know a little bit about that piece of history. Excuse me. Adolf Hitler is a name I'm sure many of you know. And it's not one that I say very lightly. I don't have the time to tell you the whole story, but I'm gonna tell you this. Adolf Hitler started off as a very likable character. He became in power in nineteen thirty-three. In those times from nineteen thirty-three until nineteen thirty-five, he used that time to be charismatic and win people's hearts. In nineteen thirty-five, he enacted the Nuremberg laws, and I won't go into detail about them here, but I urge each of you to look that up if you do not remember or you do not know what the Nuremberg laws were. They were an anti-Semitic and racist laws that he used to gain power. He didn't start enforcing these laws until a year later in nineteen thirty-six because of the Olympics that were going on. So yet another year to gain more power and control over the German population. I say all that to say, from nineteen thirty-six and from nineteen thirty-three to nineteen thirty-six, he worked in such a way that by the time the laws were actually enacted, the people were too afraid to fight back. And by nineteen thirty-eight, it was nearly impossible for the Jews to leave the country. Mass genocides didn't happen until nineteen forty-one and they didn't, the rescues didn't happen until nineteen forty-five. So from nineteen thirty-three until nineteen forty-five, Adolf Hitler was in power. And he didn't start killing people for many, many years. And it didn't start off as mass murders. It all began because of experimentations. Experiments on people that he deemed unfit for society, the Jewish population and other minorities. He deemed them unfit for society and decided to do experiments on them. Now, why is that important to y'all today? I believe that we are under a mass experiment. And if you don't believe that, then that's fine, but I believe that we are. The beginning stages. And the parallels between what was pre-Nazi Germany and what we are living through today, it's hard not to see. It's hard not to see those parallels. The Nuremberg code exists because the Nuremberg laws existed. There are ten points to the Nuremberg code. And again, if you do not know what I'm referring to, if you are clueless to this piece of history, I urge you to do the research and re-educate yourself because it's that important, in my opinion. The first point, and I'm only gonna go over this one because I know, I know my time is, is up and short. The first point to the Nuremberg, Nuremberg code is this. The voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential. This means that the person involved should have legal capacity to give consent. I'm gonna pause. Do children have the legal capacity to give consent? This means that a person involved should have the legal capacity to give consent, should be so situated as to be able to exercise free power of choice without the intervention of any element of force, fraud, deceit, duress, overreaching, or other ulterior, ulterior form of constraint of coercion. And I'll end with this. I know you said your hands are tied. What does that mean for us, the people? What does that mean? Because on this wall over here, it says, on the second belief that the community matters. Why is this meeting being held in the middle of the day where parents can't show up? Can you answer that, Dr. Coker?
I don't answer questions on this.
Or the board? Because if your community matters, the parents, and I'm gonna just pause and say this, I'm a homeschool mom. I don't have a dog in this fight. I don't even have to be here. I'm here because I have people that are in this fight that can't be here or are too afraid. They're too afraid because of their jobs. And then y'all decide to hold a meeting at twelve o'clock on a Tuesday. That's all. I urge you all to do your homework because history can and will repeat itself until we, the people, stand together. And your hands are not tied until you choose to tie them with the wrong people.
My name is Paris Carter-Green and I work for Washita Parish School Board. And I'm not gonna say that I speak for all the bus drivers because I do not. We all have different opinions. But a majority of us would kinda like to know, we heard y'all say earlier that the buses will be at a hundred percent capacity. Okay, well, when you go to the grocery store, there's little spots on the ground that says social distance. Out here on the wall, before you come in, it says social distancing. You have the chairs separated for social distancing. A hundred percent capacity on a Washita Parish school bus is sixty-six kids. That's elementary. They still say that's the same for junior high and high school, which the kids today are four times that size, so. But that's three kids to every seat. How is that social distancing? That's going against everything that for two years now almost has been drilled into our heads, just like the mask. I have been vaccinated. I was not going to do it. But then I said, well, if I start glowing at night, I don't need a flashlight. So. But, I mean, how is that safe for the kids that are vaccinated or unvaccinated? How is that safe for the bus drivers? If you're gonna cram all these kids in this school bus, and the answer that I got was, keep your windows clean and keep the windows down. Okay, well, any nut in Louisiana at a hundred and fifteen degrees is gonna have the windows down anyway. But when it's forty and thirty-two and twenty-eight degrees outside or it's pouring down rain and the boys are worse than the girls about getting wet, I mean, what are you, what are you supposed to do? Y'all furnished us with spray last year, which we were very appreciative of. I used it every day. But, you know, I saw on the news where y'all got all this money that the government had given you to make all these improvements with education and all this kind of stuff. Have you thought about putting maybe some kind of plexiglass around the bus driver? No. Have you thought about the football field? Probably. And I am an avid football fan, okay? Don't get me wrong. I graduated West Monroe in nineteen eighty-four. But sometimes you got to put the sports back here and put the people up front, you know? And there's so many bus drivers that if their house no, didn't depend on it, y'all wouldn't have any bus drivers. And I was told last year from someone in the Transportation Department that it would only take forty bus drivers to stand up on strike and it would shut the whole Washita Parish School Board down. And I'm not standing here threatening a strike or anything else because personally, a lot of them don't have the cojones because they're scared they're gonna get blackballed or they're scared they're gonna lose their job. And I just can't take it anymore. I mean, you know, what do you do? I agree with these parents, every one of them. They should have the right to decide. But you have to put yourself in my position. I could fit, I'm a real good bus driver, okay? And I could fit two buses in a classroom. So the teachers, yeah, understand their concern. But a bus driver is in an area about the size of this room, from here to that wall, with sixty-six kids that we know today are the carriers because they haven't been vaccinated or because they haven't had it or whatever. And everybody, you know, you make your own decision. That's what being an American's about. But I should have a say-so too. And when I went to school and when my kids went to school, the first thing they wanted was their, uh, shot record. If it wasn't up to date, you didn't go. You know, and I know there hasn't been a lot of research done on this and all that, but me personally, I would rather take a chance giving my child a shot than sending my kid to school and having to visit him in the ICU with a vent stuck down their throat like my sister, like my best friend's little sister right now, today, on a hundred percent oxygen because her mother didn't have her vaccinated. And this is at St. Francis, this local. But I just think that, you know, the custodial workers that have to clean up behind all these kids and the parents and the faculty, the lunch people, all these people get overlooked. And I, again, have nothing against teachers. I think they're great. But when you go talking about it, that's all you hear is teacher, 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 teacher. Well, it takes more than the teacher for the school system to run. And from what we're told at in-service, we're the most important part of Washita Parish School System because we're the ones that get them to school and get them home in the afternoons. And my mother, Martha Thompson, I know you know her, she told me to stand up when I thought something was wrong or when something needed to be said. And Skeeter might get mad. I don't know. I don't really care at this point. But, you know, I have a son at home that's waiting on medical treatment to find out what's wrong with him. He's thirty-three years old. No, he ain't been vaccinated. I can't make him. If you give me one, I'll go stick it in his, make sure he gets it. And then I have a pregnant daughter with my first grandchild. I'm what, I'm not supposed to even be around my daughter and my first grandchild? Because I'm gonna drive this school bus with sixty-six kids that are spreading this crap like wildfire? That's not fair. I don't care who you are. Every one of y'all get to sit in your office. Shut the door. You have control over who's there and how long they stay. I don't have that. Neither do the teachers or the custodial workers or the principals or the lunch people. And you really need to think about that because without each one of us, y'all wouldn't have a job. And, you know, I'm just here to try to voice my opinion. And I don't want any of y'all mad or upset because of the way I feel. But you go get on the bus and drive. Are you comfortable driving sixty-six kids around? Well, you need to go apply for a job, honey, because they looking for them every day. I can give you the contact information. So, I mean, you know, it just, it really needs to be taken into consideration. And a little bit of that money that you got would go a long way just to show the bus driver that you give a hoot. Because from where we're standing, it don't look like you do. So, and I know there's already been three or four that have quit because of it. And there's six or seven more that are about this cause. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Paris.
Thank you.
Dr. Coker, um, the school nurse is a white woman, is that okay?
Sure.
Nobody in here is a Christian and these guys are here. So everything that is coming from this board is from this board. I swear to you.
Can you, can you come up?
We're from northern Louisiana. We're in the Bible Belt. Dr. Coker is a wonderful Christian man. You're a wonderful Christian man. You are another children. I've listened to you preach before. You're a pastor. David, you know, you're a great Christian. Y'all awesome. So we know the decisions you make are not coming from a demonic place.
Ashley Daly, by the way, I'm an RN. I've been here twenty-two years. Mr. Geis, wonderful Christian man. Mr. Slusher, my supervisor. Could not be a better Christian, wonderful man. Elmer Noah, loved one.
But the fact of the matter is, is y'all are doing a job that is very hard. It is very heartfelt. You talked to us this morning. This is not easy for you to mandate things that is coming from the state. We know for a fact masks work. They do. I'm a brain cancer survivor. I took chemo to live. If my child has cancer, now did not give my child chemo.
I'm gonna have to have representation from Elmer Noah for not getting my child help
for, for not doing what the doctors had recommended. It is recommended by the CDC and those that know a lot more than I do as an RN and my coworkers and physicians around the country that work for the CDC have recommended that mask. It shows they are effective to some degree. It's no, I hate wearing a mask. I can't breathe. They, my friends, don't like wearing masks. But we have been exposed to COVID more than anybody in this room, I assure you. I had three hundred and eight students quarantine at Washita Parish High School in November. I know more than anybody.
How have you been exposed more than me? How can you say that?
I can't say that, sir.
Sir, we don't, we, we're not gonna get into that, so let, they gave you permission to talk.
And I'm, I'm a parent. I'm understanding y'all's plight. I do. But the fact of the matter is, is there are sides, there's y'all's side, there's the physician that talks his side, there's the, the professional side. It's not like someone's trying to-
Ashley, could I get you to address the board, please?
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. We're not gonna get into our, our individual feelings and differences.
Come on. But anyway, this is just from a, a standpoint of being employed with Washita Parish School System every day. I missed two days last year. I've not had COVID, praise the Lord. I've not been exposed, but I wore my mask every day. The fact of the matter is, they do work. It shows. There's proof that shows that masks are effective to some degree from transmission. It's not perfect. There is no per, there's no perfect cure for cancer. But y'all are doing the best y'all can that we see in helping these kids. Nothing that this board or Mr. Geis or Mr. Slusher or Dr. Coker is doing is in a demonic spirit. It's, it's from factual information that you're receiving from the state, from the CDC. It's not from an individual like myself even saying anything or, or like, you know, the, the other people that were speaking. It's from factual think, data. So I just feel compelled to say something as a school nurse, and I love our children. My own son graduated from Washita Parish High School in two thousand and sixteen. My guy's getting his diploma. It's a wonderful school system. It's a flagship of the state. It's the best in the whole area. And this is what we have. We have a global pandemic that none of us have been in, not you, not me, not my friends, not y'all. It's a global thing and it is affecting everybody. I hate this damn mask. I hate it. My son, my ex-husband's in the hospital with COVID right now. He can't breathe. He's fifty-five years old. He's fifty-five years old. It's serious, y'all, it's not a joke, it's not a, it's not a political statement. It's not me trying to make a political statement because it doesn't matter if I'm working for Washita Parish School System or not. It's the fact of what's doing what's right. And I see you guys and Miss May, I see what I'm doing, what is right. But you don't get the choice for every child, every eighteen thousand plus student. Eighteen, there, but there are other parents that feel as strongly as you do on the other side. And so.
Bring them back in.
I understand, I understand their concerns, I truly do, I'm a parent. Anyway, I just felt compelled and I appreciate Washita Parish School System, Dr. Coker, the board. Mrs. Slusher, Mr. Geis, Mr. Noah, I appreciate y'all and the support y'all have shown us nurses in keeping us protected. And keeping our students safe and well, I appreciate you all, truly, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rose Watson, I'm a registered nurse with Washita Parish High School System. This is my twentieth year with the system. I'm definitely not a public speaker. But I fell compelled to make three points after sitting here listening to the discussion. The first point is regarding the bus driver with the sixty-six children on it. If you can't social distance, mask. If you have the mask on, that cut down transmission. My second point is, I don't know if there is a heaven or hell, I haven't seen neither one. But I wanna live like there is a heaven, just in case it is. If we don't know if the masks work or not, I wanna wear one just in case it protect me. My last point is, my husband had brain surgery. I have worked in the OR, I have been a nurse thirty-six years. Part of that thirty-six years, I worked in the OR. He was in surgery, eight hours in brain surgery. If masks does not pre- prevent the transmission of germs. Would you want your husband, your wife, your mother, your father, with a surgeon over them? A team of scrub techs and nurses operating on your loved one without a mask for eight hours? Answer that question for me.
Thank you, Rose.
I'm Janet Dantley, I'm an RN, I've been with Washita Parish School System for twenty-one years. And, um, I appreciate all of the comments that have been made today from both sides. Um, I wanna make, um, a, a point about the number of pediatric cases. Um, we are seeing more with the Delta variant than we did last year, this is, this is way different. Um, the percentage last week, there was an eighty-six percent increase in pediatric cases. Last week from the week before. So, that is significant for our children, for our students. Wearing masks has got to be part of the prevention for our kids. And we've got to consider every student in our classroom, every student in our school. We've gotta be watchful for, for every child. That's what we're there for, is to keep our children well and in school. If we have half of the class not wearing a mask and a child comes down with COVID. You know, what's gonna happen to those students who are not wearing a mask? They're gonna have to go home and quarantine for ten days. And then, you know, three weeks later, somebody else comes down with it. They're gonna have to go home again and quarantine for ten more days. And that's not gonna be fun for anybody. If everybody wears their mask consistently and properly. We're gonna all stay in school and we're gonna keep learning. And I wanna say something too, um, I'm gonna speak to the teachers, even though I'm not one. Um, I was in faculty meeting yesterday and I just wanna say that when the teacher is in the front of the classroom. And she is, you know, more than six feet away from her students. Um, it's my understanding that she can remove her mask to speak to the class. So, the little ones will be able to see her mouth move to, you know, to make those vowel sounds, uh, like some of the parents were concerned about. Um, that is, if I understand it correctly, you know, the teacher at a distance can remove her mask to teach the class. So, um, I wanted to make that point for some of the parents who were concerned about that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Renita Calhoun, I'm an RN with the Washita Parish School System. I have worked, um, with the school system about seventeen, eighteen years. I come to support the board and address the board and give my opinion on the wearing of the mask. The masks do work and they're, they're not only, um, protect us, they also protect your child and they protect the, um. Anyone that your child is exposed to. So, we all believe in wearing our masks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Renita. I don't think they can readdress.
Can I follow up with that real quick?
I don't think we allow you to readdress one time, sorry.
So, in other areas, if it pertains to the agenda, I can speak in those sections?
Yes, yes.
We have any comments from the board? Okay, well. We need a motion in a second to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two, Washita Parish COVID. Operational guidance.
Dr. Coker, will the teachers be able to remove their masks when they're teaching in front of the classroom, as the lady said?
If they are within a certain distance from the kids, yes, but if they have to go and talk with the kids, then they would.
But when they're up in front of the class teaching, they can remove their mask.
We have a motion in a second to approve.
I saw move.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion from the audience?
We did. You already did.
All favor yes?
Yes.
Oh, no?
I'm gonna with, with, I'm gonna oppose at this moment.
Sure. All favor yes?
Yes.
Yes, we call, we just can.
Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Only opposed?
I, I'm voting yes.
You vote yes, sir?
Okay, motion carries. Moving down to item number four. Finance Committee meeting.
Mr. X, board, um, you had in your mail out and in your packet the, uh, Finance Committee report. The Finance Committee did, uh, actually, uh, had two meetings since my last report. We, we met on July the fifteenth, uh, and August the ninth. And those agendas and the minutes approved for the fifteenth are in your packet. Uh, just to briefly summarize, uh, the July fifteenth meeting, uh, you can see there, I'm not gonna go down through every one, I will highlight, uh, item number five and number seven. Uh, number five was a, uh. Issue that, uh, the Business Department, Mr. Waylon McCormick and Ms. Mekus brought to the Finance Committee. To discuss online school payments and how our students and parents have the opportunity to pay for fees and different things online. We had been using a company called O- Online School Payments for some time. Uh, and, uh, the, the committee voted to, uh, agree and unanimously, uh, support a vendor change to school cash online that we will be implementing this year. Uh, will be a slight change in that, uh, where we in the past have been charging two percent per, uh. Transaction with a one dollar fee to the parents, we are doing away with that percentage, it is a flat one dollar fee, uh, for that service. Uh, and then the next, uh, item was our initial discussion with a possible, uh, pay change and rate change for substitute teachers. Uh, in the district, Dr. Coker brought that, that day, uh, we decided after a length of discussion to bring it back at our next meeting on, uh, August the ninth, which we did, or excuse me, August the sixth. And that agenda is also attached along with tho- those minutes, and you can see at the August sixth meeting. Uh, Ms. Mekus presented the annual operating budget that she also presented in a public hearing earlier today, and she will be addressing, uh, shortly to the board. As well as, uh, the consideration of a daily rate, uh, change, um, for our substitutes that I presented to the Finance Committee. Both of those items at the August the sixth, uh, Finance Committee passed unanimously for your consideration later today, and I will be bringing that, I think, in the next item, Mr. X. So, that is a, a, uh, summation of the August fifteenth, or excuse me, July fifteenth and August ninth Finance Committee meeting. I'll be happy to answer any questions, uh, if not, um, we can move on to the, to the next.
We have a, we have a motion to accept, uh, the Finance Committee report. Uh, guys, a motion in a second.
I saw move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion from the audience? From the board?
Can I speak on that, is this about the substitute pay?
Not yet, next.
All favor yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, no, motion carries. Moving down to item number five, consider maybe substitute pay increase, Mr. X.
Thank you, Mr. X, board, uh, uh, as I mentioned in the Finance Committee report, we've had several discussions, uh, across the district and in the Finance Committee about. Potential of raising substitute, uh, employee pay rates, uh, you have a handout in your packet. Uh, that shows you the existing pay rates for our different categories of substitutes in the district. It has been, uh, since twenty fifteen since we have had a rate increase in the district, so, uh, we are bringing this to you today. The Finance Committee on August the sixth, uh, uh, voted unanimously to recommend this change to the full board for your consideration. Uh, you can see there in the column on the far right, the proposed change in yellow, uh, for our different subcategory rates. And, uh, again, I would ask favorable consideration and approval of this rate change. Be happy to answer any questions if you have, Ms. Mekus also, if you have anything as far as the budget is concerned, but she has planned for this in her budget.
We have a motion in a second to, uh, approve this.
I'm making a motion to approve this substitute pay rate.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion from the audience?
Yeah, discussion.
Um, again, I'm on here, um, also on behalf of my, my peers that, um, have been silenced. Um, and cannot speak up, they are speaking anonymously to me and they are giving me information. So, this is on behalf of paras and teachers, okay? So, I have experience with this, this has personally happened to me. Um, our planning periods are given for a reason. New hires are being hired with multiple degrees and subject areas, okay? I was math and Spanish, I got one prep, one hour, okay? When there was an absentee teacher or a teacher that had to leave because their child got sick or whatever. Instead of calling in a sub, they called upon coaches and teachers to go into the classroom or combine classes for one teacher. We would have one teacher with like thirty-eight plus kids, okay, very illegal. Um, we also have paras that are being removed from their. Children, and we know paras work with special needs and disabilities and, and help give support to these, uh, these children. They are also being called in to sub, okay? So, this has, this is directly related to the substitute pay, okay? If we're calling our paras from their position to go substitute, which is not a hard position for a para. And teachers taking away planning periods, are you going to give them those funds that you would give a substitute teacher? Since they are being the place of the substitute teacher? Also, is there gonna be any time given for extra planning? Because now they have lost their planning period, they cannot be in front of children planning, organizing, preparing, collaborating with one another between subject. If they're missing out on their planning period. And we're not hired to do things at home, that time's for our family, okay? And then our family suffers. So, paras and teachers want to know, is that money gonna be given to them? If they are called upon to be a substitute? And if their time that's taken from them for planning purposes, is that time gonna be added back to their clock time? Okay, so that's what teachers want to know. Can anyone speak to that, or? I mean, is this even an option, is this, you know, can this be considered, you know?
To my knowledge, it never has been, um, you know, looked at and, uh, I was one of those teachers at one time that covered all the time. And, you know, being the, being a team player, I, I did what I was asked to do, you know, during the course because. Sometimes we, and I think, I know you have two principals that have been up here and Mr. Geis has been a principal and. Uh, we do what we can do to make sure we get through it. We know that we've had a very, uh, severe shortage in subs anyway. So, sometimes it's not the fault of that substitute not being able to be there. And so, uh, I, I don't know that I can speak to that right now.
Okay, we just wanna know that it's being considered.
And I would, yeah, and I'm sorry to cut you off, but I would certainly encourage those people that are talking to you to come talk to us. They're talking to the wrong people, they need to be talking to us.
They, and I myself has been re- reprimanded and just shunned and it's been said on deaf ears, so. Um, and I'm pursuing this all the way to the state, like I said, these funds that these teachers were promised by the governor and all this stuff. We're, we're getting to the bottom of this because the teachers have not received anything, they were considered frontline workers. These paras are being put in situations, in some dangerous situations. And, uh, just like us teachers, I mean. We, we feel like our job's at stake. And when God calls you to teach, he calls you to teach, and he'll take you from that whenever his time is ready. And, um, like I said earlier, I had six and a half years of this, okay, on a daily. And we all know that whenever you're that team player, who do they call whenever you're a team player? They only call on the team players. And we're used up and our teachers are exhausted, they are.
I just, sure, you know, I think that that's some good points of discussion and probably something that, you know, maybe, uh, we could kick around. Well, I don't mean literally kick around.
Right, right.
Uh, but she makes a valid point.
Yeah, and we don't wanna survey, and we know, we under, we know the protocol with paper trails. Parents, their surveys last year, they did not get responses on the, you know, the measurements, the teachers, how they felt. Um, faculty, I was still faculty at that time, whenever we surveyed how we felt, we never got any correspondence back, there was no transparency. So, um, we're still in that situation. So, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you too.
Any more discussion from the board?
I just wanna say, uh, to Mr. Geis, Dr. Coker and, and others, I know, and a couple of meetings ago, we, we, we did discuss at least giving, uh, some type of a increase. Uh, various and some of the categories, and this, Ms. Mekus, uh, also was concerned, concerned about others as well. So, I, I appreciate, I told my wife this morning, she said, is that all? I said, but a little bit is better than nothing at all. And so, we start here and we continue to look at, uh, in the future to see if we can do better. And I would love to see us do better. Uh, I don't know exactly what it's gonna cost the district, uh, just to do this. Did you have a, is it in here, Ms. Mekus?
It's based on the, um, fill rate of our subs and the, our current usage. It's about a hundred and fifty-five thousand people that cost the district worth of these.
And, and I would love to see, uh, that, that, that we look again next year and, you know, hopefully, I, I believe, I don't know. I believe the district can afford, can afford a number bit more. I just believe we can. Uh, I mean, this probably is less than what, uh, one or two people make together.
And our parents are all great, almost three hundred dollars after insurance does, they're working far as necessary.
I agree.
I mean, they are themselves, I want to.
Not that I don't appreciate this, but I do agree with what you're saying.
Any more discussion from the board?
It wasn't a problem at elementary level, because we never got planning peers anyway. You might lose your library time, you might lose your computer time, and we all covered for each other at one time or another, and what goes around comes around, so. No problem.
Any more discussion? All favor yes? Any more discussion? All in favor, yes? Oh, no. Motion carries. Moving down to number six, financial report for June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, Ms. Mekes.
The general fund, while this is the financial report for the period ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, I do want to call your attention to the fact that we are still in the process of closing out the year. We are still making journal entries. We're still posting receipts and disbursements as we get invoices and and checks in. So as of today, we are projected to end the twenty twenty-one fiscal year with an excess of two hundred, two hundred and ten thousand dollars in the general fund, which is is fairly breakeven. We're ending with a hundred and two percent of our budgeted fund balance of twenty-three million eighty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-one. Just a reminder, that is the fifteen percent that we keep in fund balance to be able to operate, to have funds on hand to pay salaries, to operate cost reimbursement grants and and the like. In our district number one M and O half cent fund, which is in the second column, we're ending the year with the surplus of three million sixty-eight thousand two hundred and five for a fund balance of twenty-three million six hundred and twenty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-nine. And I will call your attention to the fact that as we've discussed before, we are, we are building up this fund balance. We are able to build up this fund balance through the funds that are available to the district through the S R grants and a lot of the the funding available through them, which is, which is mandated to be used for certain certain uses which coincide with the district M and O funds. So such as replacement of technology, which is primarily done through the M and O funds. But we're able to set those funds aside to build up where we were building up to get one-to-one with our technology devices. The S R funds came in and helped us to reach that one-to-one. And they're allowing us to build a fund balance up to be able to maintain that one-to-one once they're gone. The technology in the classroom, such as the interactive smart boards, these are band funds, choir funds, instructional curriculum funds for textbooks, workbooks, roofs, buses. We rely heavily on these funds. I will call your attention all the way back to the next to the last page. You'll see it gives a breakdown of fund balance and it shows in the general fund and in the M and O fund, we're ending the year with right at a hundred percent of the projected fund balance. On the very last page, you'll see that our revenues and expenditures have coincided with the with the budget as well. Difference being in the M and O funds and we are being very conservative with those funds currently due to just the unknown of the economy, the the sales taxes available. So we're being very conservative with those funds, which is, which is why the expenditures are down to about eighty-four percent of what we normally project now. There any questions on the financial statements?
We have a motion in a second to accept the financial report for June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll move the future financial report.
A second.
You have a motion in a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oh, no. Motion carries. Moving down to item number seven, consider annual operating budget for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, Ms. Mekes.
Each of you have the annual operating budget draft in your packet for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two year. We have the the public hearing on the budget at eleven o'clock, which I know most of you were able to attend. It is a balanced budget that we're projecting for the upcoming school year. Does anyone have any questions on the budget? I won't go go through it again unless you'd like me to.
Dr. Coker on the S R funds that we're getting from the federal government for the COVID pandemic. I know we've got several committees that's been working on utilizing those funds. If for some reason we don't spend all the funds that have been sent to us, do what's the game plan or going forward with those funds? Do we return them back to federal government or do you know what what their requirements are on those funds?
Right, we actually have gone through and budgeted every bit of the dollars that is available right now. And the committees have put together, and it's probably six committees. Clint and Mr. Keegan are the two that kind of are are over, they're co-working on this. And a big part of the monies is going a lot to technology, a lot to safety, to the tune of two and a half million dollars just on, and you know, we had heard earlier that that teachers were having to buy things to clean. They shouldn't have to buy dime. Parents should have not have to send anything to school to clean with because we have the funds to do that. That comes out of Stephen and Jason How's office, Jason more so out of the warehouse. If they just let us know what they need and we can certainly, we can get it. But it is a, if we need to rebudget, then we go back in and rebudget those those funds. But, yeah, and we get some indirect costs that comes off of those funds that hopefully we will be able to use as a one-time pay incentive for our employees. But those indirect costs have to accumulate in order for us to do it. There's nowhere in that thing that that's, you know, that we can see legally to just use S R monies to pay teachers that one-time cost. As a matter of fact, there's some questions coming up right now in the state on that. And and, you know, we have other means of trying to get to that point, but it is through the indirect cost amount that comes from our people handling the monies that has been, that has been given to us.
And it's our understanding, based on what my conversation with you is, that we cannot use this S R money that the federal government provided for any new building construction projects in the parish. Is that correct?
If we used it for, well, and that's a, that's a question that you have to be specific. If it's for any building, new building, you have to apply to the state and say, can we use this to build a football stadium at a particular school? Or can you use it to build, I think, something like an outside classroom? Would probably be, you know, something that is pandemic related, so it could probably be used for that.
Making sure I'm understanding the flow of the money. Federal government provided the money through Congress and it goes to the state. And then the state, was it the Betsy Board or the Louisiana Department of Education?
Yes.
Actually has control of the money and delegates that money out to each district based on the number of pupils?
That's correct. That is correct.
So the state is controlling the money from the federal government as far as distribution to each individual school district?
That is correct. And then we take, we have to submit a plan. And Clint, you and Anthony certainly can chime in because y'all work on this all the time. But we submit a plan and that plan is pretty thick. And I'm going to get you a copy, I'm going to get all of you a copy of this plan just to see where we are at this particular point. It will put you to sleep at night because it is so detailed on how every dollar is, you know, is being spent because we are monitored on every dollar that is spent on this. You know, there are some things that we've had to come in and readjust in our plan even now just because, you know, it didn't pass the the inspection of the three at the state that it actually goes through. And so we come back in, we put in what they ask us to put in and then then it goes through.
So we do have flexibility, but the flexibility has to be approved.
Within the guidelines and the parameters of how the federal government sent to the state of how you're going to actually expend the funds and the money that's used.
And the state has the authority to make those decisions.
That is correct.
Right, these funds come to us in the same manner as our other cost reimbursement funds such as Title One and IDEA. We receive an allocation based on our student count, which they send out based on the federal guidelines that they're given through the Department of Education. And then we submit a budget based on the guidelines issued by the Department of Education on the the U.S. Department of Education. Then it's either approved or disapproved.
But the federal government that sent the money down provides the parameters that the state is operating under as far as the money distribution to each district.
Right, federal money comes to us through
The parameters.
Through grants and and every grant is identified by a CFDA number. And that CFDA identified grants has to specifically follow the guidelines given by the federal government on that money.
Just like we submit a budget and a plan to the state, our state has to submit a plan and a budget to the federal government.
Okay.
How they're going to approve. And it has to line up with the requirements and guidelines that the federal government is giving in order for us to spend that money. There strings with that. You have to do what they ask you to do. So we have a plan that's required by the state. The state also has a plan, has to have a plan in place before they even get that money to line up with the federal government.
But it all starts with the federal government parameters.
Oh, dear.
So, so, you know, I know earlier we we voted to to increase the paras, the subs. And that money that we use for that comes from?
General fund.
It, the cost identified is general fund cost.
Thank you.
But now if a federal program pays for a sub, they will pay the rates approved by the board.
They'll pay, so it it could come from multiple.
Right, it could be.
Because if it was a special ed para, it comes from.
Well, it comes from general fund if it was a special ed para.
It's general fund if it was.
Right. If it was.
For a bus driver.
General fund.
Okay, okay.
Depending on, now if it's one of the bus drivers paid through for a Title One program. Title One would pay for that sub.
I got you, I got you. I understand.
Right, it depends on where the employee is funded through.
Right.
That we're hiring the sub for.
I feel it, I see.
And we have a motion in a second to consider the annual operating budget for twenty-one and twenty-two. Motion in a second.
I saw move, we're accepting it.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion from the audience?
Second, I hear. A second.
I do, I know.
Okay. You got it.
I got you.
Hey, thank you.
Any discussion from the audience? From the board. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oh, no. Motion carries. Moving down to number eight, request for surveillance equipment, Mr. Bobby Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks, board members. I've had a couple of schools on the west side give me a call about.
I wish you would have had them wives around here whenever we had the crowd. It'd been nice.
Highland and Riverbend has requested some additional cameras. And so I'm asking the board today to let me go ahead and get those two camera sets. It's going to cost about twenty-five thousand dollars to use west side sales tax money to actually make that purchase.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to give Mr. Bobby Jones permission for this surveillance equipment.
You're right.
I move.
Sixteen cameras at Highland and sixteen at Riverbend.
Okay.
And motion in a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board.
Did Claiborne turn anything in for more cameras?
No, not that I'm aware of, Mr. Coker.
They had mentioned it last year. I don't know if it was taken care of or not.
I really, really don't remember.
Okay.
I can check with.
Okay, if you could check and figure.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? From the board. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion. Second. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Thank you, board members.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Moving down to number nine, high architect for Ryzer Middle Elementary School. I'm sorry, we scratched out Ryzer Middle Elementary School.
Right, right, elementary school.
Yeah.
The restrooms at Ryzer Elementary School.
Right.
I'm asking the board upon an architect for that project.
No, I'd say Tim Brandon.
You make the move?
Yeah, that, well.
Okay, second.
Okay.
You can't make the motion, Mr. Jones.
I move.
I hire Tim Brandon.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
Second. Got a motion, second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board. All in favor, yes?
Yeah.
Oh, no. Motion carries.
Yeah.
Moving down to item number ten, approved right away with ten.
Yes, it's at Sterlington. This is the property that we bought from Mr. Johnson. They already had, this company had, Sterlington had it right away on this property, but because we bought it from Mr. Johnson, we now own it. They need to get permission from us to approve it. And if you look at the little map, I think I got it marked down here, the small deal in red, that's, that's right away they asking for. You know, it doesn't interfere with any of our projected plans for Sterlington High School.
Do you have any idea what that's going to run, Ken, money-wise?
It's not going to cost us anything. It's just right away.
Cheap enough. Do we have a motion in a second to approve the right-of-way ten-eighth for the water main at Sterlington High?
I move, we approve the right-of-ways as requested.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board.
Seeing this right-of-way, I saw the red line here, that is on top of the pipeline too, right?
Right.
So the right-of-way is on top of pipeline.
Right.
And away from any future building projects there, right?
Right.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor, yes?
Oh, yes.
Oh, no. Motion carries. Moving down to item number eleven, construction renovation projects important, slasher?
You should have in your folder or on in front of you status report from TBA on Bowley Elementary School. Had a meeting this morning at nine o'clock, I think, I don't know whether Dr. Coker got there then or not.
I did, it was over when I got there.
We kept him upstairs for a while. But anyway, you can see the progress they're making. If you happen to drive by or stop and look, you can, you can see what they're doing there. I still think we're on schedule to finish by the middle of December. They're, they're getting everything in the dry and as they getting it in the dry or the roof on, you know, they're getting the other people in sheet rock and block and everything painting. And once they get it in the dry, they move pretty fast.
You know, I, I went by there, boy, they're working, they're working.
They, they're getting after.
Yeah, a lot, a lot to do though.
We had a meeting last week, last Tuesday at East Washington Middle School on the football field and concession stand. Mr. Graves was there. They're moving right along. Looks like that they were getting ready to pour or do the pad for the concession stand the morning we were there. So I think they're on schedule. At Woodlong, was out there like three times last week. We have, we've got permission to use, from the fire marshal to use the band and choir room. They moved in it. The building that. They moved in it, uh, the building that they're renovating now, I don't know what they call it, Family Life.
Family Consumer Science.
Consumer Science. They had last Thursday, they had it all painted, had all the cabinets in, uh, they were prepping the floors. And he told me that they were gonna start laying tile Friday and work through the weekend, so they should have tile this morning, I don't know if they do or not. But then all they had to do was put the sewing machines, the cabinets in for the sewing machines, and it would be ready. They promised it'd be ready by the fifteenth, uh, for the students to use. And the roof at Washita High School is ninety percent complete, Mr. Manley, Mr. Gray. And that's all I have, unless y'all have questions.
Any more question for Ken?
Ken, what estimated time for completion on that East Washita Middle School stadium? You know, that this year or first or next year?
Yeah, it won't, no, it won't be ready this year. Do you remember what he said?
So, next fall is when they gonna, you know, have it completed, okay. I never have, remember hearing the completion date. He had a dirty end for foundation, thank you, ready.
Thank you, Ken.
Yes, sir.
Moving down to evaluation of bids.
I'll take that, well, I guess in second, with the, uh, roof at Riser.
Uh-huh.
You all have a bid that's in front of you. The, uh, the low bid of Terry Rupin, four ninety-nine, he whispered his bid, he started lacing, the price on his fingers, obviously. Uh, so, Dax, Daxman and Dax low bid, uh, mid-western roof, uh, six hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. I bet it's that far, that's a seven fifty, so we're still, we're on the rolls. Being on the budget.
That's mid-south.
Mid-southern western.
Okay.
Or mid-western, Rupin, I saw, mid-western roof.
Okay, mid, mid, okay. That's item number two.
Six forty-two.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, accept the roof replacement at Riser Middle.
So moved.
Riser Elementary and Middle, it's both of them, I guess, maintenance operator.
Both of them.
Okay. You got a motion?
Yes.
You got a motion and a second, any discussion from the audience? From the board.
Just had a question, Ken. Ken, I was noticing that, 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 uh, the bids that came in, that was a wide range. A wide range, you know? Have any idea why?
Well, to be honest with you, I don't, um, you know, we, we really thought this, this was, because they bought it long and bought, we talked to seven hundred people, they just loved.
Now, Terry Rupin was four ninety-nine, didn't.
He made a mistake on.
I was wondering if he had miscalculated.
He, he pulled it there, bid real quick.
Okay.
Yeah, he did.
Which he, I mean, they have to argue to do that, you know, to like.
He gone broke.
All in favor, yes?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, motion carries, uh, you, you wanna take items one, one through four?
One, three, and four, yes.
Okay.
Okay, the first item is, uh, air filters, is for the air filters for the, uh, uh, school district, going in our buildings. Uh, my recommendation, which was only bid we had, was from Air News, and the total for, for the filters that they did was sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, to accept these air filters?
I make the motion and the second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion from the audience? From the board.
That's for all the air filters in the district, Bobby?
They, they're, they're different prices for each one, this, so there's a, there's a long list of them.
But it covers the entire district filter, okay.
Any more discussion from the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no, motion carries. Item number three, Chromebooks.
This is some Chromebooks that, uh, hopefully will get ordered by tomorrow, right, Mr. Miller? Um, my recommend, the recommendation from the, uh, committee was, uh, Dale, they got ninety-four points out of a hundred.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept Dale for the Chromebooks?
I'll move it, accept Dale for Chromebooks.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion from the audience? From the board. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no, motion carries. Item number four, school board controller, West Monroe High School.
Yes, Mr. Hicks, this is for, the, the controller went out over there, so the school's actually paying to have this replaced. I received one bid from Daktronic for sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars.
We have a motion and a second to accept Daktronic's for sixty-eight thousand, seven thirty-three?
So moved.
Okay.
Motion and a second, any discussion from the audience? From the board.
This gonna be ready for the football season, Bobby?
I don't know, Mr. Manley, it may, it's gonna probably be.
I'd hate for that big school board not to be working.
Should just have Bobby run across there with some.
Yeah, so you don't know if it's gonna be ready or not, Bobby?
I, I don't know, Mr. Manley.
You just ordering them apart.
I just, that's all I'm doing.
Any more discussion? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no, motion carries, permission to bid.
Thank the board.
Permission to bid, Mr.?
You wanna take one?
Item two, eight?
Yes, sir.
I so moved.
Okay, well, out of one through eight, we got a motion, you got a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any discussion from the audience? From the board. All, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks, thank you, board.
Board, our next meeting will be September the fourteenth to twelve o'clock. Even though we took a little heat about that earlier, but I'm sorry.
It doesn't matter, what, what time it is, somebody's gonna have something to say, so.
Sorry. Dr. Coker?
I don't have anything.
I have a motion to adjourn.